All right, it's seven o'clock on January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. Our first meeting of the new year. So I would like to wish everybody a happy new year as I call the meeting to order. The first item of business is the call, roll call. Ms. Chain?
Osberger, Earthalot, Bruder, Frattoni, Freudman, Kochenberger, Moran, Sharon, Shaken.
Mr. Kochenberger has stepped out of the room momentarily, but he is here. The second item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. These are the minutes of our December ninth meeting. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Mr. Sharon. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Frattoni. Any comments, corrections? Okay. All those in favor of the minutes as presented say, raise your hand. Okay, it is unanimous. Mr. Kochenberger is still out of the room. The next item is the opportunity for the public to address the council. And I can see that we have, thanks, I can see that we have a room full of people who are very interested in town business. I will, I have a list in front of me and I will, we're going to ask the staff of the, of Region Nineteen to come to the table later. So what I'm looking for, the people who are on this list are representatives of the public rather than of institutions. So here are the rules. We ask you to give your name and address. It's a five-minute limit and the limit is monitored by a timer. So if you hear a beep going off, you may finish your sentence, but then please don't take any more time. If you have anything written, we will be glad to have, to receive your written statement. It will be included in the minutes for the next, of our, in minutes of this meeting. Council members may ask questions for clarification only. We do not wish to get into a discussion during the course of public comment. This is only an opportunity for you to speak to us and for us to make sure we understand what you're saying. So there will be no cross-conversations. And finally, we ask everybody to be civil. So the first person on my list is Julie Sherman. And the second person is Jeff Kern.
I'm a member of the E.O. Smith faculty, rather I spoke at the end.
No, no, we're only asking administrative staff and members of the board. And I'm not quite sure who else, but if you are speaking as a member of the public, you will be on this list.
Ma'am, I am accused as a member of the E.O. Smith Teachers Association President of that meeting.
Yes, that would make you a member of the public for this purposes.
Thank you.
Okay, so Ms. Sherman, please.
Good evening. Thank you all for your volunteer service. My name is Julia Sherman. I reside at forty-three Pine Woods Lane, Mansfield Center, and I have been a teacher for forty-three years. I have worked for Region Nineteen for thirty-two of those years as science teacher, science department chairperson, and currently I am a substitute teacher. I am here to support our school teachers, students, and administration in the employment of the School Resource Offices, SROs. I am in the E.O. Smith High School almost daily. And as a substitute teacher, I go to every corner of the school, to all rooms, all hallways, and all office areas regularly. I'm here to speak tonight as a citizen, not as an employee of the school system. And I have met and talked with all of the security personnel in our school. Our new SROs are competent, kind, thoughtful, and vigilant people. I think that we need these men to help us keep our school secure at present. If there is concern that any groups of students would be targeted by our staff, it is unfounded. Our administrators chose people who support and respect all students. I interact with all staff members and students from every walk of life. As an experienced school employee with a great deal of perspective, I believe I can offer you an accurate assessment of the atmosphere and the mission of our school. I would like to state that our administrators do their utmost to respect and assist all students. I cannot detect any discrimination towards students for any reason. Our administrators continue to make efforts to assure all students are accepted. Our guidance staff work tirelessly to identify and help students who are struggling with all their aspects of life. When I walk in the building every day, I see students from global backgrounds walking and talking together. I see students with disabilities and special needs socializing and working with everyone else. I see students of every ethnic background getting along fine with the others. I do not see students of any ethnic or racial group being targeted for misconduct. As a grandparent of children of minority descent, I am sensitive to this issue, and I would be the first to let you all know if students were not being treated equally. I think we have an amazing school, and I hope you don't look at a statistic to determine what happens in our situation. Our staff is constantly trying to find better ways to make our students and staff feel safe and secure. Please support their efforts by continuing to fund our SROs. They are good people with good intentions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sherman is an experienced speaker in front of the town, so she knows to speak into the microphone. One of the pieces of instruction I neglected to give at the beginning. Welcome.
Thanks. Volume's not usually an issue for me. My name is Jeff Kern.
The microphone is primarily to catch words so that they can be broad, taped and broadcast because we are streaming live and we are available on television. Go ahead. Followed by Steve Bana. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Kern. I live at fifty-eight Cemetery Road, Mansfield, Connecticut. I'm a parent of two E.O. Smith graduates. I've worked at E.O. Smith High School for thirty-four and a half years. I am the current president of the E.O. Smith Teachers Union, known as EOS HSTA. In my role as the union president, I thought it would be appropriate to speak on behalf of the teachers as a whole on the proposition before the town council if a consensus could be shown to reliably exist. To that end, I asked my constituents to contact me with arguments both for and against the resolution, the resolution being, of course, whether to retain the SROs. I can report that not a single email that I received contained thoughts, feelings, or data that would negate the idea of retaining the SROs. The responses that I heard ranged from for the SROs, ardently for the SROs, and vociferously for the SROs. And although a number of the comments pertained to the immediate safety of the E.O. Smith community, and I wouldn't want those concerns downplayed, a lot of teacher comments referred to the externalities associated with the presence of the SROs. By this I mean the positive externalities associated with having the SROs. Mention was made of their being in classes as speakers, their calming influence in the hallways, and at lunchtime, the peace of mind that parents felt that some, that that was something positive. Proactive was the word that was specifically used, proactively protecting the students. One more positive externality that came to my mind this afternoon at our executive council meeting of the union was seeing the police in their role in our school as positive role models, civil servants, just like us, the teachers, and our principals. So therefore, on behalf of the teachers' union, I encourage you to vote in favor of retaining the SROs. Thank you.
You mentioned a positive role model. Aren't the teachers and the guidance counselors and all the staff that's been there before there were SROs positive role models? They were for me when I was at E.O. Smith.
I don't think, Mr. Freudman, I don't think, I don't think there's any denying of that. That's not a clarification.
I'd like to clarify on, on positive role models. Is there a lack of positive role models without SROs?
I'm sorry if I misspoke. Let me check this.
You need them for a positive role model.
I did not say that. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Mayor?
If you have nothing to say, thank you very much.
Only, only to say that, I believe what I said was, they are positive role models like the teachers and the principals.
Thank you.
That was exactly what I said.
Thank you.
I can submit my.
Yes, certainly give it to Ms. Chain. It will become part of the minutes. The next speaker is Stephen Bane, Bane?
Bain.
Bain. E, okay. Followed by Tanya Mainz.
So hello, members of the town council. As a parent of two high school students attending E.O. Smith and as a director, oh, sorry, Steve Bain, twenty-one Samuel Lane, Mansfield, Connecticut. So as I said, as a parent of two high school students attending E.O. Smith and as a director of special services for Region Nineteen, so I'm dual roles here. I write this letter of support for our school resource officers, Mark and Hans. Our SROs have become an important part of our school community. I've witnessed their unique ability to address and diffuse a very complex situation. So ending their assignment at E.O. Smith would, I feel, reduce the safety and security of staff and students. And thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Tanya Mainz, followed by Chuck Levens.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Mainz. I live at thirty-eight Spring Hill Road. I have the privilege of writing this letter, not only as a parent of a student here at E.O. Smith, but also an employee of E.O. Smith. I have a much different perspective because of this and wanted to share my thoughts on having resource officers in our building. I have four children, one who graduated from E.O. Smith, a current freshman, and two who are in Vinson Elementary. As a parent, like many, I feel we live in a safe community and our administrators have done a great job implementing safety protocols. I don't feel like my children are in danger when they go to school. I feel as parents and members of a community, we are comfortable with the thought that not in our town will an intruder enter a school. Not in our town is tragedy going to happen. But the sad truth is that we are not immune from mental health issues that I feel are the root cause of such tragedies, and this thought process isn't reality. Tragedy can hit anywhere at any moment. I applaud Regional District Nineteen Board members for taking this extra step in ensuring my son is safe when he is at school. I applaud them for not just hiring an armed security guard, but for making sure we have resource officers who are trained and retired from law enforcement. I take comfort in knowing that the individuals walking the hallways alongside my son have his safety in mind and the experience and knowledge to handle any situation that may occur. As an employee of E.O. Smith, I have had the opportunity to see both Mark and Hans walking our hallways and building relationships with our students. What I have observed is our students don't look intimidated by them, but will say hi. Both gentlemen are approachable and relate well to our students. I have personally had multiple conversations with both of them and have heard their assistants being called upon multiple times since the beginning of the school year. As you know, we hold lockdown drills, so we are prepared in the event there is an intruder. And I have to tell you, even though I know they are drills, it is still an unsettling, uneasy feeling to have to take shelter and hide and not know what is happening in the building. I see the necessity of this. I don't argue with our drills and how we are to protect ourselves and our students. But as a parent, to have to take shelter in one place and know my son is doing the same somewhere else in the same building is the most devastating feeling ever. To know my son is in the building and I cannot go to him and protect him scares me to my absolute core. I can't explain how horrible a feeling it is as a parent to know I am in the same building as my son should an intruder come into the building. I should trust the protocol set in place, which I wouldn't change or dispute. But as a mother, this doesn't feel good at all. To be a helpless parent is the most nerve-wracking, frustrating feeling ever. As parents, I ask you, have you ever been in a position to not be able to protect or help your child? It does not feel good at all. It's angering, upsetting, downright heartbreaking, and honestly, one of my greatest fears. I take comfort, not for my safety, but my son's in knowing that Mark and Hans are in the building protecting him and every other student. In the event of an intruder gaining access to E.O. Smith, how long would it take police officers to respond appropriately? One minute, five minutes, possibly more? Now compare that to the seconds it would take Mark and Hans to respond, diffuse the situation, and regain control and safety of the school for each and every student in it. That is your son or daughter being protected by Mark and Hans. The knowledge of having them here takes some of that fear and anxiety as a parent of not being able to personally protect my son away. I ask you, is your child's safety worth being fully protected? Are you prepared for the possibility of an intruder entering this school and not having Mark and Hans here to protect them? My son's life is far more valuable, and he deserves the right to be protected at all cost. Does your child's life have the same value? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chuck Levens, followed by James Kelly.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Levens. I live at one oh seven Highland Road. I'm retired from E.O. Smith as of two thousand and seventeen. Worked, have been honored to work in the E.O. Smith system for forty years in combination of working for the Mansfield Youth Service Bureau and E.O. Smith High School for thirty years as support services counselor. Recently, I've had an opportunity to come back. I'm, I'm here for four months, assuming my position as a person who's taken my position is on maternity leave. So when I came back to E.O. Smith, the first question was, how is it? What's different? And what I noticed was a number of things. First of all, one thing that we spent so much time at E.O. Smith doing is forming relations, relationships with kids, providing support for them. And as good as I thought it was when I retired in two thousand and seventeen, I came back and find out that, found out that the collaborative assistance team, our student assistant team, and all the supports we have for kids has actually gotten much better. So E.O. Smith as a school community has never been better, from my view. Obviously, the thing I noticed first was that we now have SROs in the building, and I wasn't sure what that was like. We hadn't had that in my experience. So I really took it upon myself to see how this thing is working. And it's working unbelievably. We have two more men who are interacting with our kids, providing support, guidance, and relationships, and also providing safety. Our kids really have embraced them. They have become part of our community and doing a wonderful job. So I think overwhelmingly, the presence has been positive. Our kids really have felt really safe with them. I think that our school culture is in a really good place, and, and I encourage you not to mess with that. You know, this is working really, really well. They've done a really good job. Our kids' emotional security, feelings of safety and security are really important. I hope that we keep it in the same way that it is. Thank you.
I ask a question for clarification. Did they, did the students at E.O. Smith feel unsafe before?
I think people feel unsafe everywhere. So I think that, I mean, the reality is, I'm not sure that our E.O. Smith kids feel any more unsafe than anyone else, but what we do have right now is we're not immune to what's happening in the world. So in the event of the unthinkable happening to us, we have protection. We have people, and there are two guys who are part of our community. They're not seen as police, as police officers. They're seen as members of our community who can protect us in the event of something unforeseen.
Well, thank you very much. The next speaker is James Kelly, followed by Zachary Donald.
Hi, my name is James Kelly. I live at ninety Coventry Road in Mansfield. I'm a special education instructor, head football coach at the high school, a very proud, fortunate African American that moved into this community six years ago. I love working for E.O. Smith. Outstanding people that really care about the students and about each other. The interactions I've had with the SROs have been more than pleasant, and not only that, they're, they are a change, but they're a positive change for our school, much as moving in and being residents of our community as African Americans in a community that is not prevalent with African, African Americans. We fit in well. We love it. A change is always good, and having that safe feeling is important. My children go to Mansfield Middle School. They love it. They have encountered situations that have come across that have been difficult for them at times. As great parents, we work with them every day, and one of the things we talk about for my seventh grader coming to the high school is the people that are behind him that care. SROs, we've talked about, so he understands they're there, so that there's never a worry, a scare, or a concern. And that's something that some families deal with on an everyday basis, that others that maybe growing up didn't have that. We love our community, and I, you know, hope and pray that you consider, again, the strong part of, and presence of the SROs in our building. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Zach, is Zachary Donald, followed by Matthew Lissy.
I'm Zachary Donald. I live at thirty-two Querion Stores. Welcome. So I'm a student at E.O. Smith. I'm a senior. I'm also class president. I'm here to talk today about the, my, as a student's perspective about the SROs. For me personally, abruptly, abruptly terminating the position would not be safe for our school. Not only will give threats incentive because of the lower security, but also make the response time to any situation increasingly long. Police officers, on average, can respond to a situation in eight minutes. By then, the damage would be done. Our SROs can respond to anywhere in the building in under a minute. Taking away the SROs would also be taking away part of our school community. I don't know if the council has spoken to the, Hans or Mark, but if you did, you would know how great these guys are. Hans and Mark don't patrol the school looking for kids to rest and beat up. They are generally nice people who have made efforts to make connections to many students just like me. I do have to say that I see and talk to Hans a lot more than I do to Mark. Hans is a great guy. He always motivates me to work hard in school, even though whenever he asks me how I'm doing, I say I'm tired because I always am. Not only that, but he's also a father. He's a, he has a, he has a kid at Bryant University and also one at Coventry High School. He cares a lot about us as students and is here to do good and keep us safe and nothing else, well, and nothing else besides those. And the same goes for Mark. Personally, for me, after the Parkland shooting and many of my friends, we were very, felt unsafe in our school. At the start of this year, with the SROs in the building, I have, I have felt safe and I have talked to many of my friends about this, and we have all felt more safe than we have before. Now that the choice is in your hands, know that if you take away the SROs and if something bad happens, just know who is responsible. Keep the SROs.
Thank you. The next speaker is Matthew Lissy, followed by Glenn Matoma.
My name is Matthew Lissy. I'm a resident of Mansfield. I live at eighty-nine Mansfield Hollow Road in Mansfield Center. I'm also a teacher at the high school, and I tried to prepare remarks on both sides, and I just couldn't do that. It ended up, there's such a marriage between being a resident and a, and a member of the community and a teacher, and I couldn't separate them, so I'm just gonna say what's on my mind and hope it's well received. E.O. Smith is a very safe place, and it's a very great school. But that doesn't mean that something bad couldn't happen at some point. How many people would have thought Sandy Hook would have been something we would have talked about for this long? I don't think anybody would have. It was a shock to everybody. I'm in full support of keeping our SRO officers at our school. I have kids in the pipeline that'll be coming up to the high school in a number of years, and I would feel safer with them there. As a teacher, I feel safer with Mark and Hans there. There's many things schools have done after Sandy Hook for the illusion of safety, and unfortunately, many of those things that they have done are illusions of safety. There's things that make you safe, and there's things that make you appear that you're safe. Having Mark and Hans is something that actually makes us safer, much safer than we could have been. And if they're not there because we want to save a little money, how much is the life of a, a young child worth? I wouldn't want to look in the parents' eyes and tell them their kid didn't make it because we saved some money. So my father was a policeman, and I asked him once, Dad, why did you want to become a policeman? And I'm thinking, oh, because he wanted the rough and tough, and he wanted to, you know, the, the action, and an adrenaline junkie, and he looked at me and he... They are generally nice people who have made efforts to make connections to many students just like me. I do have to say that I see and talk to Hans a lot more than I do to Mark. Hans is a great guy. He always motivates me to work hard in school even though whenever he asks me how I'm doing, I say I'm tired because I always am. Not only that, but he's also a father. He's a, he has a, he has a kid at Bryant University and also one at Coventry High School. He cares a lot about us as students and is here to do good and keep us safe and nothing else, and nothing else besides those. And the same goes for Mark. Personally, for me, after the Parkland shooting and many of my friends, we were very, felt unsafe in our school. But started this year with the SROs in the building, I have felt safe and I have talked to many of my friends about this, and we have all felt more safe than we have before. Now that the choice is in your hands, know that if you take away the SROs and if something bad happens, just know who is responsible. Keep the SROs.
Thank you. The next speaker is Matthew Lissy followed by Glenn Matoma.
My name is Matthew Lissy. I'm a resident of Mansfield. I live at 89 Mansfield Hollow Road in Mansfield Center. I'm also a teacher at the high school, and I tried to prepare remarks on both sides, and I just couldn't do that. It ended up, there's such a marriage between being a resident and a member of the community and a teacher, and I couldn't separate them, so I'm just gonna say what's on my mind and hope it's well received. Eosmith is a very safe place and it's a very great school. But that doesn't mean that something bad couldn't happen at some point. How many people would have thought Sandy Hook would have been something we would have talked about for this long? I don't think anybody would have. It was a shock to everybody. I'm in full support of keeping our SRO officers at our school. I have kids in the pipeline that'll be coming up to the high school in a number of years, and I would feel safer with them there. As a teacher, I feel safer with Mark and Hans there. There's many things schools have done after Sandy Hook for the illusion of safety. And unfortunately, many of those things that they have done are illusions of safety. There's things that make you safe and there's things that make you appear that you're safe. Having Mark and Hans is something that actually makes us safer, much safer than we could have been. And if they're not there because we want to save a little money, how much is the life of a young child worth? I wouldn't want to look in the parents' eyes and tell them their kid didn't make it because we saved some money. So my father was a policeman. And I asked him once, Dad, why did you want to become a policeman? And I'm thinking, oh, because he wanted the rough and tough and he wanted to, you know, the action and an adrenaline junkie. And he looked at me and he told me, he said, no, the reason I became a police officer is because I want to help people. He said, you'll see society at their worst. People don't call the police because everything's going good. They call the police when things are bad. And that's what police are there for. And I believe Mark and Hans want to help people. And there's been talk about, I heard some of the other comments here about minorities being targeted, and I find that, that really bothers me and I find that insulting to assume that because somebody's a minority, somehow they're engaged in some kind of criminal behavior that will allow police officers to arrest them and haul them off someplace. I don't see that at Eosmith High School at all. Mark and Hans are there to help people. That's not why they came to the school, because they're looking for arrests or anything like that. I know them. I've talked to them. I wanted to meet them right away because I wondered what, was this gonna change our school? Was this gonna change our environment? And it's, everything I've seen has been overwhelmingly positive. I have not heard anything to the contrary from faculty or students. When I asked myself why I wanted to be a teacher, I'm not gonna go get into that fully for you, but I can tell you, I did not become a teacher so I can serve as some kind of shield in case something bad does happen. I would do that. We saw that the young ladies and all sorts of teachers put themselves between the criminal and their students. I think teachers do that. We are not adrenaline junkies, but don't mess with our kids. All right? So I think this is an overwhelmingly positive thing. I think this is good for our community. I think it's good for the students. I think it's good for the people. And I hope when you guys are thinking about this and voting on this, you'll take it into consideration, some of the points that were brought up today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Glenn Matoma followed by Russ Weiner.
All right. Good evening, Glenn Matoma. I live at 563 Stores Road. I'm a parent of an Eosmith student, a parent of a graduate. I work closely with the school district on a number of different initiatives, and I'm a big believer in a lot of the things that were said around here this evening about the positive school environment that Eosmith is working diligently to create for all students. That said, I have grave reservations about armed law enforcement officers in our schools. I think regardless of the intentions of the individuals involved, that what we know from the data is that school resource officers create a risk of human rights abuses for a minority of students within the building. So the vast majority of students may feel safer, but the risk accrues to those who are at the margins. And those are the students I'm particularly concerned about. Developing informed, effective policies to increase the security and safety of our schools makes a lot of sense, but it can't be balanced by creating additional risks of allowing certain students to become more justice-involved. The school-to-prison pipeline is real, and it is incredibly harmful, not only for the individuals who get caught up in it, but their families and the communities of which they are apart. So I understand that this body has a particular decision to take tonight, and it's difficult. You're kind of faced with a fait accompli in some ways, and reversing that decision creates all kinds of complications. Nevertheless, you have a due diligence obligation to look carefully at this, to decide whether or not it is in the best interest of the town that you represent, and to make your decision accordingly. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matoma. Russ Weiner followed by Andrew Borkwin.
Good evening. My name's Russ Weiner. I live at 239 Mount Hope Road, Mansfield Center, Connecticut. Just to be clear, just for the sake of full transparency, I am actually an employee of the Connecticut State Police. I'm a dispatcher for over a decade. But I want to make clear that anything that I say now is representative of me, not Troop C, not the Resident Troopers Office. I don't work at Troop C. I do not have any day-to-day dealings with them or with the Resident Troopers Office. So just, just to be clear. Right now, we have a situation where they have authorized these SROs. They've put them in place to make our schools safer. You have instituted a situation or a precautionary measure to provide our students with additional security. To take that back, to take that away at this juncture is a step back, no matter how you look at it. We live in dangerous times. We live in uncertain times. It's unpleasant. We don't like to think of it. I know there have been concerns about, the issue was brought up of bringing a gun into the school. And that's kind of a narrow way of looking at it. You're not just bringing a gun into the school. You're bringing a police officer, bringing an SRO into the school to help provide other services other than to just simply stop, you know, a mass casualty incident or to arrest people because they bring drugs in. That's, that's a function. That's a part of it. But it's also about building community. It's about building and fostering a safe environment for these kids. Our world has changed. Why is not really for us to discuss at this point. But the fact of the matter is, is that we have a situation and we have a precautionary measure that's now been put in place that can help to prevent something serious from happening down along the way, but also can be a positive influence in these kids' lives and their day-to-day as we go along. We need to keep that going. As I understand, it's already in the budget. It's already going forward. It's already, it's not gonna cost us any more money between now and the end of the year. I also understand that the memorandum, excuse me, the memorandum of understanding, apologies, expires in later this year. Is that's correct? In June? Let it run its course. Don't be the people that put our kids in a less safe environment. Don't fall victim to the not-in-my-town, Mansfield has a low crime volume or anything else. That's, you can't, there are forces in play in this world that we have to be aware of, that we have to be mindful of. And no matter what, and no matter how good the response of, you know, Resident Troopers, Troop C, it's all good. But to have somebody there, to have somebody with boots on the ground there with the kids, and not only for the major catastrophes, but for the day-to-day, and to build good environments, good relations between the community, between law enforcement, it's, it goes without putting a price tag on it. And whether or not there were some procedural errors in how it happened, or it's done. It's here. And we're safer for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Borkwin.
Hi, my name's Andy Borkwin. I'm a teacher at Eosmith. I live on 23 Jonathan Lane in Mansfield. I'm a teacher here at Eosmith. I've taught here for twenty-six years. I've been a resident for eighteen years. I've coached football. I've done a lot of things. I also have a student that graduated here two years ago, a senior, my daughter, and I have two students who'll be here in two years. As a Mansfield teacher, father, resident, I ask that we support the Eosmith administration and school community to do everything we can to keep the school community safe and keep our SO officers. To decrease the security in the building doesn't make any sense. We live in a society that's changed over the years, and to think about getting rid of our SO officers would be, in my opinion, a potentially dangerous and careless decision. I believe that Mansfield Town Council should want to do anything possible to work with the Eosmith Administration and Board of Education to consider their options to do what's best for the safety and the students and the staff of the towns involved. It's also really cool to see the SO officers when I'm in the cafeteria, interacting with the students. I haven't seen nothing but positive interactions with them. I was always told before I moved to Mansfield from Manchester that it was a good town to live in because in Mansfield we had an enlightened electorate. So I'm hoping you can see that this may be a new and different approach to school security, but it has many positives. I'm not gonna go into the scenario, I think you've heard the scenario again, for many people. I think about it all the time. I think of an intruder in the building with a weapon and sitting in my classroom, and there's no worse feeling in the world. And there's nothing, nothing more effective than someone meeting them with force that's in the building. There could be nothing else. So I thought of something to close with, and I found their job position. I thought it was interesting, so I'm gonna read it. Their job position, general summary, "This position is responsible for supporting and facilitating the educational process within the Region 19 District by providing a safe and secure environment through building and establishing meaningful relationships with students and staff and proactively interacting with the school community to ensure the enforcement of town and state laws, preservation of the public order, protection of life, and the prevention, detection, and investigation of crime. The incumbent will work effectively with students, parents, school personnel, and community agencies to support teaching and learning in the schools." It sounds like a pretty important position to me. So I urge you and highly urge you not to, to get rid of this position. Thank you.
Thank you. Michaela Orpheus. Please state your name. You didn't hear my introductory remark, so please state your name and address. You have five minutes. Please be civil.
Absolutely. My name is Michaela Orpheus. I, like my fellow associates from Eosmith, are in a unique position. I am a teacher. I'm also a parent of three students at the school, and one is coming up in two years. I cannot possibly say enough positive things about the SRO position that I have seen from my students in my classroom, as well as my biological children. The interactions that I've seen across the board with kids from the life skills to kids at sports after school, establishing, as Mr. Borkwin said, positive relationships. I have had students come up to me and say, I've never had a good relationship with police officers, and now I do. So I think that the spillover, the continuation of how this affects their lives going forward, not only the, I mean, I don't want to reiterate things that have already been said about the safety. I have had students that weren't comfortable going to the bathroom all day and now are because it's a safer place to be. We have, we have had them have eyes on things, and the kids notice that. They feel safer. We've had incidences that they've responded to. The kids notice that. They feel safer. But also in the grander picture, they're going out and they're having more positive relationships and not having a combative. And these are kids that are coming from difficult situations, some of the kids that are in my classroom, and they said this is the first positive relationship they've had with police officers, and they understand now what that can bring to a situation. As a parent and as a staff member, I think it's invaluable to have them there. I watch them high-five people. Hans came to my room the other day just to check in, as he does, say hi to everybody, ask how the football game went. He remembers plans that kids have, and I was distraught. I had a lot of stuff to do. I had a kid that had to go get a test. He walked the kid down to get a test. So they do a whole range of things and affect kids on every level. I stopped and saw the Unified Theater Program as well as the basketball game the other day, and they were there for that. So their presence makes the kids feel safer. It makes us as staff feel safer, and I have never seen an interaction that wasn't positive and encouraging. And I know that sometimes they have to toe the line. That's what police officers have to do. That's what teachers have to do. But I stand here as both a parent and a staff member saying that they need to stay. They need to stay. They need to be around. They need to be seen. They need, they need to be there to help keep all of us safe. Thank you.
Could I ask something for clarification? You said you feel safer now. What was unsafe before? What, give me some examples where a student felt unsafe at Eosmith.
I don't know exactly what clarifications I'm allowed to say, but we did.
Anything you want.
Oh.
Give examples. When were they unsafe?
There was an incident, there was some vaping that was occurring.
Some what?
Vaping, like drugs in the school. And one of the bathrooms near me was a hotspot, and it's not anymore. Kids can go in and they feel safe. I don't want to make it seem like it was outrageous or anything like that. It's something that happens in high schools all across the state, but it's made a remarkable difference. I mean, I had kids that didn't go to the bathroom all day, and now they can go in the bathroom.
Smoking in the bathroom. Thank you very much.
We have gone through the list of people who have signed up. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council? Mrs. Wassman? I saw your hand first, and then the lady with the glasses on her head, and then there's a gentleman in the back.
Betty Wassman, Ulter and Pike Road. You ought to have at least one person who's not Eosmith affiliated. I'm way, way long past that. But I do know, having been on the council recently, that some of you have very serious prejudices about guns. And I'm going to urge you to put that aside and listen with an open mind to the experience and reasoning of the town professionals, such as Sergeant Timmy and the Smith Superintendent. Please make an informed decision, not an emotional decision. Since this came up, I have talked to several people. One is a personal friend who is in law enforcement, not at all affiliated with this town, but who knows the SRO program very well and has explained a lot of the intricacies to me. And I personally have concluded that the SROs are an important part of Eosmith's security system, and I urge you all to vote to keep it. I know there are issues with having it within the town. I don't like that myself, but that, if that is the regulation, I think you just have to bite the bullet and accept it and keep the SROs at Smith. Now, I have one thing further. The Human Rights Commission, that is on your agenda as well. I want you to step back and think about that and think about the need for such a commission. That came up very quickly, and here there is a proposal to institute such a commission. I personally don't see a need. I don't know. I think you need at least to review what kind of a need there is in the town for this and also consider the added burden you're going to put on the people that you're going to want on such a commission. So please give careful thought to that, and there's no need to make a decision about that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wassman.
Good evening, everyone. If you recognize me, I'm Jaleen. I live at 70 Jonathan Lane. I am the Planning Specialist for the Town of Mansfield. What you might not know is I was also employed for five years with the Mansfield Resident Troopers Office. So I just wanted to just make a comment that this public vote tonight that's gonna be on the internet seems, I don't know, should we really be broadcasting to the world that we're not gonna have SROs tomorrow? You know, when I was with the Resident Troopers Office after Sandy Hook and we were developing the security protocols, they're not published. They're private, and that's for a reason. So I'm gonna ask you tonight to perhaps think about executive session and not making this public. Thank you.
Thank you. The gentleman in the back.
Good evening. My name's Alan Trottershaw. I'm a resident of Mansfield, 12 Ogronimi Road. I'm also an employee of Region 19. I've been there for over twenty years. I'm a thirty-year instructor and teacher. I guess my perspective is much more coming from the idea of the responsibility of the council itself. The process by which the SROs were originally hired was something that went through all of the proper channels in terms of the Board of Education, which is composed of, Region 19's Board of Education, which is composed of elected representatives from the Town of Mansfield and also elected representatives from the towns of Wellington and Ashford. They, as the representative body of Region 19, explored the ins and outs of the SRO program. They went through their discussions, their debate, and SRO program. They went through their discussions, their debate, and they voted unanimously that it was a positive program and voted to implement it. They contacted the town manager at the time, went through the process of, the, the process of working the system out with the Mansfield Town Manager. I, I, I read somewhere that the, the town lawyer was consulted. Everything was put into place except for the fact that the town council was not informed of the whole process, and I understand that. My advice to you is kind, it would be to take into consideration what was said by a number of individuals. The, the program is put in place for this year. It, it's got a limited run in terms of the memorandum of understanding. The, the funds have already been allocated for it. It makes the most sense to me that you, as a council, would look to allow the, the program to, to finish its run, to evaluate and collect data, you know, not just observational data, but actual data that, that looks at the efficiency of the program, and then make your recommendation at the termination of the, the contract, the memorandum, as to whether or not SROs would move forward from that point. Just like any kind of vehicle, you would never, you would never buy a vehicle without test driving. This is our opportunity, because it's in place, for us to evaluate the effectiveness of the SRO program firsthand. And from what you can hear from all the individuals, myself included, it, it's, it's a wonderful drive. It's, it's one of the most luxurious and comfortable and, and safe vehicles we've ever been behind. Having these officers in our school gives us that added sense of security. I've never felt completely unsafe at E.O. Smith. That's one of the reasons I came here as an employee. It's one of the reasons I brought my children here. Both of my children went through the system and graduated from E.O. Smith. But it's never bad to feel safer, and having the officers in the building, knowing that they're there to respond in the, in the most unforeseeable and, and impossibly disastrous opportu, you know, situation that may occur, makes me feel safer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like a clarification. I understand the idea of safer, but there are many venues other than schools where you don't have a officer one minute away. Do you avoid those situations because you don't feel safer?
Mr. Freudman?
I dropped the question.
Thank you.
Any others?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council on this or any other issue? All right. I will declare the opportunity for public hearing, public comment to be closed. I would like to make a couple of comments. We will, we have two items of business on the agenda before we get to this particular topic, so I urge you to, to sit through it. They are relatively brief. I will say, just as a matter of clarification, that Region 19 Board of Education has the authority to hire armed SROs. They have security officers. What, to have a full SRO, the security officer needs to be cert, needs to be hired by the municipality as a constable. And what that hiring does is it gives that particular office, those particular security guards, the ability to detain and/or arrest people. Now, anybody, any adult in the school has the power to detain a student because students are, don't have the right to, that adults do. But there is no power to detain an adult in the school unless you're a police officer. So that, the, the legislation which created SROs required that they be sworn in by, by the municipality as a, some form of police officer. In Mansfield, it's a constable. Because we have resident state troopers, the supervising police authority is the resident state trooper. So no matter what we do, Region 19 still has the authority to hire armed security guards. So that, I, I just want to make that very clear. Now, we will have, be having a much greater discussion about this as, as the evening goes on, so please stay tuned. So from this point, the next item on our agenda is the report of the town manager, Mr. Carrington.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Everyone, all council should have a copy of my report. There was a few at the table. Obviously, not enough for everybody in the crowd. This is repeat for council business. We are using a new format in the council packet. If we could switch to an electronic method, it would make, save a lot of time, and other things could get done in the manager's office. Departmental reports, Park and Recreation. The Mansfield Community Center will hold an open house this weekend, January 17th through 19th. There will be free facility use during the hours of operation all weekend. Tours, refreshments, and membership enrollment fee will be waived. Public Works. Since our Arbor's Crew Leader started on October 15th, he and his crew have removed 194 trees, which includes 56 trees over 85 feet that were removed by a contractor. And snow. So far this limited snow season, the department has used approximately 1,000 tons of salt and has expended approximately $86,000 for overtime. So even though it's, we had 70 degrees, we had a lot of ice and other events. Town Clerk. There's a special election to fill the Office of State Representative for the 48th Assembly District for the remainder of the official term, commencing on the ninth day of January 2019. It will take place tomorrow, January 14th, in District 4 only. The District 4 polling location is Annie Eventon School, 306 Stafford Road, and the poll will be opened from 6:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. And the Stories Farmers Market continues its winter operations down at the Buckland, Buchanan Auditorium in the Mansfield Public Library. Next one is January 18th, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, any questions for the town manager, our comments on his report? Okay. The next item on the agenda is the report and comments of council members. I have a couple of things to report to you. In, just before Christmas, former Mayor Shapiro and I met with President Katsoulaus at the university. It was our first meeting. It was very cordial. There are a number of initiatives that we share, such as economic development at Four Corners. There are some issues where we have some conflict, but there are also, even within the issues where we have conflict, we have some opportunities for some collaboration. So we will be talking, you know, keeping these communications open. President Katsoulaus has appointed Kara Workman to be the liaison with the town. Kara has been working with the town through the partnership and through other, other efforts and, for a number of years, so she knows us and we know her, and that should be a very good working relationship. The second thing I want to comment on is I attended the first, my first meeting of the Legislative Committee of the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. They were presenting their agenda. There are a number of, their legislative agenda. There are a number of issues on the agenda that I am not comfortable with, and I don't think Mansfield would support. For example, the creation of Boards of Finance for Boards of Education. We don't, have not had a Board of Finance in this town since the 60s, if then, and it's not considered a modern form of government, and it's not one that we would support. For the most part, the items on the agenda were items of interest to towns and municipalities around the state. I will continue to be active in that role. I recently received a communication from, from an organization, wait a second, I will find it. CCM has a homelessness prevention task force, and they are looking for volunteers to participate in a point-in-time count and a youth count and outreach project. These activities take place during the week of January 21st through 28th. It is an attempt to actually count the number of people who are homeless in our communities. Mansfield has areas where people camp, and I encourage anybody who has an interest in being part of these, these efforts to contact, you can contact me, and I will put you in touch with the, the folks who are doing this work. It sounds to me like very important work. And finally, I have been invited, or we have been invited, to attend the Friends of Agriculture Breakfast, which is sponsored by the Tolland County Farm Bureau, January 25th. If anybody would care to join me, I'm planning to go. I invite you. Let me know. And that's my report. Other members have comments? Oh, one other thing. This is the big one, actually. All of us attended the memorial service for Bill Ryan, a much beloved member of our community, who died after a long battle, years-long battle with COPD. It was an absolutely wonderful event that reflected his family's humor, their dedication to Mansfield, their dedication to Williams College. Bill was a very loyal alum of the, of the, that college, and it was, there were literally hundreds of people who came to, to remember him and to speak well of him. So any other members have anything to add? Ron?
Just briefly, with Al and with Sam Bruder, I attended an orientation that John put together, which was very, very helpful, even though I've been on the council for a bit, and thank John and thank Sherry and others who participated in that. It was, it was a good experience. And I attended a CCM, Connecticut Council of Municipalities, orientation for new council members from around the state. Whatever differences we may have with CCM on some issues, they do put together a good presentation, and I'm going to seek to get them to email the handouts that they distributed so I can distribute those, if you wish, to, to all of you. I learned a few terms that I didn't know about budgeting and a few other things, so it was a very useful day.
Anybody else? Mr. Freudman?
Yes, thank you. On, last month, on December 10th, I attended the Town University Relations Committee, and there are three things there that are of interest. The first is that the university is working on plans to basically have the Mansfield Apartments, which are across the street from, from Town Hall, have them demolished, and as I understood it, they would, they're looking for a company to build high-rise dorms there. I think they mentioned 700 beds. I may have the number wrong. Mayor, you were there with me. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it was a pretty high number. I don't remember the timeframe. I think they said 2023 or 2024. My understanding is that UConn would not be building it as a dorm that they would build, but maybe find a company that would do the, that would own the building. UConn would just own the land. I asked for clarification about what that would mean for the taxes. I would assume that if it's a privately owned building, it might be added to our grant list, unlike any of the other residence halls, but I was not clear on that, so I do hope that as time goes on and at the appropriate time that the town staff follow up on that. Second thing is, I was a bit disturbed by a report from one UConn official that has, monitors student behavior off-campus, and he had received a complaint from a resident over, and I'm just going to quote him, "Four students were outside their rental house talking to each other." And some neighbor, who apparently does not like the fact that students do rent houses in our residential neighbors, neighborhood, actually called in a complaint to the police. I was very glad to learn that the police did not issue a citation or, or a warning because, you know, they weren't doing anything wrong, but the resident did refer it to this office at UConn, which often gets students in trouble for bad behavior off-campus. Fortunately, they did nothing with those students either, other than to talk to them and find out the, so my point is, we've heard a lot of people talk about safety. I think we live in a safe community. I believe our, we haven't had violence in our schools. My only wish is that sometimes some people would be a little more tolerant of neighbors, regardless of their status, whether they're owner occupiers or student renters. The third item had to do with the UConn position on sewer connections. I will not comment on that now because it is actually on our agenda as, as new business, so that will be coming up in a few minutes. That's basically all I had, but I just want to comment on how much I am in agreement with, with the mayor on what she said about school resource officers. People should understand that schools have long been able to hire all the armed guards they want. They just not called school resource officers, and they can carry guns, and anyone who's a minor, and that, of course, is most of the, almost all the students, a body could be, could be detained, and, well, I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. I think some people are under, under some misconception about that. So they can hire resource officers to walk people to their tests, or to make sure students aren't smoking in the bathrooms or whatever other bad, I'm putting that in quotes, stuff has been alleged or reported. That's, that's all I had. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Any other council members? All right, then we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the School Resource Officer Program, and Mr. Carrington, who would you like to call to the table to help us understand this issue?
I don't know if you want me to give some background first, and this did come out of Personnel Committee also, so I don't know if that complicates my discussion.
Yes. I wasn't, I was looking at the wrong agenda at the moment. Hang on. We do have a, a recommendation from, from the Personnel Committee. However, before we get to that recommendation, would you please, we'd like to be informed before we actually begin debate.
All right, just some background before I call some people forward. Management asked, or was asked to brief the council on this program back in September of 2019, and out of that meeting, it was requested that the town attorney, Kevin Dennehy, review the question of whether the former town manager had the authority to enter into the agreement with the Regional School District and the state police. I am actually the one who signed the MOA. I came in, as you all know, July 17th. This was already, people were already hired. It was all agreed to, and I, I signed it, not knowing that council was unaware of it. From that, it went to Personnel Committee, where we discussed the SRO program. We had received input from Region 19, and I will call them forward, and also the resident state trooper. And after that, we had the town attorney review, and he, in his letter dated November 13th, he gave four options. First one is take no action, to affirm or reject the memorandum and allow it to terminate by its own terms on June 30th, 2020. Option two, terminate the memorandum pursuant to Section 7 by giving 30 days' notice to the other parties in the memorandum. Option three, ratify the memorandum and approve the job description for the school resource officer. Or four, reject the memorandum immediately and terminate the SRO program and terminate the employment of the current SROs. So I think what we're here for tonight, I know there's a lot that comes, is those four actions. That was what the town attorney gave, those four options that the council is acting on. If we get into something about security, we may need to go into executive session and start talking too much, too detailed. With that, I'd like to call the Region 19 Superintendent Jill Krieger and the E.O. Smith Principal Lou DiLoreto for it, also the town attorney, Kevin Dennehy, and I'll hold off on the state troopers for now.
Welcome. We're just going to kind of get rid of some of the wires so that stuff isn't in the way. All right. Why don't we begin by you telling us something about how this program came about and what the reasoning behind it is and so on? Ms. Krieger, do you want to begin?
So I prepared something. I was going to speak in public comment, and I understood that it'd be okay to start with this, with you.
Sure. And if you can leave a copy with the town clerk, it'll go into the minutes.
So, good evening. I'm Jill Krieger, and I am the Superintendent of Schools for Region 19 E.O. Smith High School, and I really appreciate this opportunity to speak to you tonight. So the Region, and, and before I begin, I just want to point out, there are a number of our board members here. Would you just stand if you're a Region 19 board member? So just want to make, make them aware that they're here as well, representing the three towns of Mansfield, Willington, and Ashford. representing the three towns of Mansfield, Wellington, and Ashford. Um, the Region 19 Board of Education unanimously supported hiring two part-time school resource officers, uh, who are retired police officers for the 1920 school year. I'd like you to know this decision was not made lightly. While initial conversations occurred, uh, beginning last summer, uh, a year ago, a summer, before the Parkland school shooting, the response from parents as a result of that shooting confirmed that this additional layer of protection was needed. Lou and I received emails, calls, and had parents come to Board of Ed meetings, asking us what were we doing to keep their kids safe. And, and recognizing at the same time that there were a lot of things we had in place and that we had put in additional ones after that event, but saying that wasn't enough. As the Superintendent of Schools, I felt that having SROs was one important piece of a security plan that was missing. I've worked in three other districts that all had SROs. In addition to being available for a crisis response, I found them to be valuable to the school and a resource for both students and families. The decision to hire SROs came following a lot of research. This included speaking with, um, with and meeting with town and public safety representatives from Enfield, Tolland, and Ellington, the latter two who use a model similar to ours. Uh, they have resident state troopers, and they have an arrangement with an SRO in their schools. Our board felt it was imperative to hire highly-trained police officers. So what we do, we were aware, and I've, you know, as I presented this program to my staff, many who are here tonight, they were told that we had that opportunity to hire armed security officers on our own. We felt, and I think the board very much supported the idea, that we wanted highly-trained police officers, and that training comes to us through the relationship we have with these positions with the Connecticut State Police. Sworn police officers are required to have 60 hours of training every three years, and that training must include the following: firearms, rape crisis, domestic violence, human relations, handling juveniles, policing the law, patrol procedures, gang violence, bigotry, bigotry, and bias crimes. While I am aware that there is research concerning the potential for increased arrests and the over-representation of students of color being impacted, there is also research that shows that this is dependent upon the school. E.O. Smith is not a school that frequently arrests students or has an abundance of student discipline, nor do we want to be. We do not even have an in-school suspension program or an after-school detention program. Our arrests and expulsions are tied to mandated situations, primarily the sale and distribution of drugs or other extremely serious offenses. We monitor the data on suspensions and arrests, as does the state of Connecticut, to ensure that all students are treated fairly and that discipline policies and actions do not impact students of color unfairly. While we are only four and a half months into this school year, at this point, our arrests, expulsions, and hospital transports are down significantly. During the, we looked at data between the first semester, almost, from the first day of school to January 1, last school year and this school year, to give you some data. So last year, between the first day of school and January 1st, trooper, state troopers responded to and took 12 incidents reports at the school that required a case number. These are ones that actually went on to be investigated as something, uh, serious. The troopers also responded to 10 times, uh, 10 times for calls that did not require a written report. Um, in this school year, troopers respond, in that same timeframe, troopers responded to and took three incidents reports at the school that required a case number and report. And troopers also responded to five, five times to calls that did not require a report. Um, in the beginning of this school year, our SROs had not been fully qualified through the Connecticut State Police, so the troopers were still coming into the building to do that for us. Um, since they've been there, there's been one, uh, arrest that they have made. Uh, in the school year, um, 2018, 19, and I, you know, I thinks, I heard you hear about the vaping issue. And when we talk about vaping, it's not smoking, it's actually drug-related vaping. And we have had a, a pretty significant issue last year where a number of students were transported to the hospital as a result of this. Um, so last year, in the same timeframe, there were 13 vaping incidences that were addressed administratively and medically. Um, we had five drug-use incidences and five, uh, what were called inappropriate contact incidences. In the same window of time, we've had zero vaping incidences to be addressed, one drug-use incident, and two inappropriate contacts. I also recognize this is early in our data collection, and I honestly, um, am not gonna say that I think the SROs completely were the response for the vaping. I think we, as a school, instituted, uh, we had parent sessions, information sessions, taught people about it, um, and there was a lot of press this year about the dangers of vaping. So I'm not trying to, um, say that that's the whole response. But we do believe that the proactive efforts of our SROs to engage students in conversation, build relationships with students, and be visible throughout the school have impacted our statistics. We also recently participated in a security audit through our insurer, Kerma. This security audit is part of a mandated security plan through the state of Connecticut. Every November 1st, I have to submit, all, all schools in the state of Connecticut have to submit a safety plan to the state. And as part of this plan, you have to have a security audit done every once in a while. We hadn't had one since I've been here. So we had, um, the security audit just occurred recently, and I shared with the lead, he had particularly mentioned having SROs as being a, a good thing. And I shared with the lead auditor that these positions were now being questioned, and we weren't sure if we would be able to keep them, and he was surprised to hear this. Currently, there are SROs in most high schools, including Tolland, Stafford, Ellington, Summers, Ram, Glastonbury, West Hartford, Wyndham, and over 60 other schools. And I'm leaving you a document that shows what schools have SROs as of 2018. As a school system, we recognize the importance of getting the right people in these positions. Our interview process included members of our school administration, teachers, and support staff, including social workers and school counseling staff. The final candidates were then forwarded to interviews with me as the school superintendent, your town manager, and Sergeant Timmy of the Connecticut State Police. In our first attempt at hiring, out of that pool, only one candidate was hired. As a result, we reposted, and we went through the summer, and the second position wasn't filled until late in the summer. I hope that this points out to you how seriously we are about hiring the right candidates for these positions. We have hired and will only hire SROs with a strong interest in working collaboratively with our administration, school counselors, social workers, school psychologists, those who possess compassion and de-escalation skills, and who understand adolescents, and who are aware of bias and its implications on students of color. We have and will only hire highly-trained police officers who have these skills. I hope that the town council will not make a decision tonight. I understand that you were not informed by, of this position by the former town manager, but that is not the fault of the region. The Region 19 Board of Education, including four elected Mansfield officials, made this unanimous decision. We believe that having SROs on our staff is in the best interest of our students and staff. Thank you.
Good evening. I have a statement as well. I'm Lou DiLoreto, the principal of E.O. Smith. I feel we have followed the appropriate steps to implement our SRO program. With that said, we're willing to engage in a dialogue from this point forward to ensure all of our stakeholders are aware of our goals for the program, how we will collect and share data, and monitor our program effectiveness. I have been hearing comments as a result of people reading research on SRO programs. I'm sure we can agree consulting research is an appropriate step to take in learning more about any issue. We've done this as well, and have paid particular attention to suggestions for program implementation. Our SRO program is set up to guard against unintended outcomes, such as increased arrests and, in particular, students in protected classes that may be more at risk. In fact, the memorandum of understanding Mr. Carrington referred to outlines safeguards to protect against these increases. For example, as stated in the MOU, the authority of the SRO is limited to the physical boundaries of the school, does not extend into the community. SROs at EO are subject to the same guidelines that govern the state police. SROs are required to keep data on any measure of prevention they implement. Meetings they attend to increase the understanding of the program and their law enforcement functions. They are also to confer with the administration before conducting any legal action. SROs are bound to confidentiality of personal information. The SROs are subject to the direction of the school administration, town of Mansfield, and Connecticut State Police. The SRO prog, program operates under four objectives in a graduated response model outlined in the MOU. The objectives refer to educational programs and activities to integrate law enforcement education and perspective in discussions with students, parents, and staff. They refer to the development of prevention strategies to resolve problems and establish positive connections with students so they can view SROs as contributors to their feeling safe in school. Our goals for the program also specify establishing a close partnership with the school administration for the purpose of maintaining safety and the use of a graduated response model. The MOU even describes how SROs will conduct themselves on campus, specifying again that SROs have to work with the administrators before taking action and minimize interference in the educational process. I intentionally did not reference the people we have currently in this position because this is about the position itself and not the people currently occupying it. We've created procedural regulations to ensure the safety and protection in every situation and for each one of us. As you've heard, SRO pro, programs are common in schools today, but we understand this program is new to our school community. We want all of our stakeholders to feel comfortable that this program represents our school mission, vision, and values. Taking any action tonight to terminate this program will create a division in this community and is unnecessary. Please invite us back in June. Tell us what information you want to hear and see, and allow us to make adjustments. We all agree will make the program more effective for all of us, so we can feel comfortable. In the meantime, I request you take a few months to learn more about how the program's functioning on a daily basis. Reach out to other elected officials in the region to see how they feel about the program. As we all know, we have families from other towns who will be affected by your actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Denneen, do you want to add to this conversation at this point? Do you want to respond to questions? All right. Do members of the committee have questions? Mr. Conshenberger?
Thank you for this. Um, this is very helpful. If you, um, I don't, if it's not confidential, can you share the Kerma report with us? Or is that considered confidential?
It is considered a confidential document.
Okay, thank you.
My board will see that report in executive session, but it can't be seen publicly.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Mr. Sharon?
I agree with everything largely that has been said, and I'm supportive of the program. But one thing that has concerned me is the lack of absolute control that the superintendent and principal have over these officers, understanding that the two people who were hired are perfectly fine and everything is working very well. But as a matter of organizational principle, I am concerned that as I understand it, the superintendent, should she or a future superintendent wish to terminate that person, would have to consult with and work out an agreement with others. This is somewhat troubling to me from a, an organizational standpoint and a lack of control over the school that the superintendent and principal should have. Is that a concern of yours?
For me, it's not. I feel like we, even as, as this year has progressed, we work together on our evaluations. We met collaboratively, Lou and I, with, um, John and Bob, and, you know, reviewed their performance. You know, I think this is a collaborative three-way relationship between three organizations. And I feel like we have a good working relationship with each, and that, that has, I don't have concerns about that.
Uh, I, I have a couple of questions. There's a list of trainings that these, the holders of these positions need to complete. Have the holders of these positions completed these trainings?
They have because they both, um, there were a number of things they had to do to get hired. Um, lie detector, you know, a, a number of tests that they completed. But yes, because they both, one literally just retired from the Connecticut State Police in order to take this position, and the other is still a current officer retiring this month. So yes, they have received these trainings. And they're, they've been mandated, mandated to in their own jobs. And the beauty of this relationship is, we can continue to get training following that same model through the Connecticut State Police because of this collaborative relationship.
But the Connecticut State Police aren't trained as school resource officers. There are special trainings for school resource officers. Are, are they getting those trainings?
We have not done that yet. We've actually just looked at, uh, a conference I shared with Lou in Pennsylvania. But there, and there are trainings like that available, but they have not participated in those yet.
Because one of, one of the council's concerns is that the data, the generalized data indicates that action has to be taken in order to avoid behaviors that are common. Right? And I, I'm not sure exactly how we want to describe that, but clearly, we don't want anything that happens in Mansfield to follow the data that's national and generalized. And so we would really like to hear what you're doing to make sure that that doesn't happen. And so far, it hasn't.
It has not.
Okay. Other questions from council members? Mr. Shaken?
I think just to sort of expand on that a little, that, that, that is one of my, Ron had brought up the other of my two sort of major concerns about this. There's a national certification, there's a national association of school resource officers, and it doesn't sound like we've started that process yet. If this program continues, I would really, really strongly urge that we don't wait until June for that, that we start that process. I mean, tomorrow, even if the council doesn't make any decision tonight. There's also localized, not just, so that's a national organization, but the Child Health and Development Institute of Connecticut, CHDI, has done a ton of research on this and is working with programs around the state. And have, have we engaged with them at all? They've, they've put a, I haven't, I'm not an expert in this, but they've put a whole sort of paper together about schools being intentional, about reducing instances of arrests in, in school-to-prison pipelines specific to SRO programs. Have we engaged with them at all?
Yes, we have, and we are aware of their guidelines. We haven't put them formally into place yet, but we do have them in draft form. So we are in that process. We are aware of the National Organization of School Resource Officers.
Okay, that, that's good. You said something, Mr. DiLoreto, about the requirement in the agreement that the SROs consult with the administration before taking legal action. I don't know if this is a question that Sergeant Timmy would, would need to answer or not, but it's sort of my understanding from the long conversations we've had as a council about police departments in general over the last several years, that it's very difficult to require a police officer to consult with someone who's not a police officer before taking legal action. So is that actually the case? Do these officers have the same amount of discretion that Sergeant Timmy has when he pulls a car over in terms of affecting an arrest? Or do they, are they actually required to receive permission from you or the superintendent before putting handcuffs on someone or, or affecting an arrest?
So that's what is written in the MOU. Okay? Now, there are mandated situations where they are required to make an arrest, just like there are mandated situations where anyone at the school is required to call the Department of Children and Families, things like that. What I'm sharing with you is that we've worked, worked hard to have a, have a process where they consult with us and we make decisions together. Okay? I'm not gonna sit here and say that there are no situations out there where they're not gonna use their arresting powers. In fact, there are probably situations out there where they should. Um, so there is no guarantee. All I can tell you is, if you would like that to be more restrictive, then we will work with you and change the language in the MOU, so it's clear. We're happy to do that. We don't want the scenario that I think you're leading to where we have SROs going on their own and making arrests. That's not our, our intent at all.
And I don't think it's anyone's intent, certainly no one on the board or the, or the council at all. But I, the concern that I have is that the agreement as it sits is the SROs have three bosses, essentially. They are required by this MOU to listen to you. They are employed by our town manager, who makes decisions about their hiring and firing and scheduling. And their commanding officer is Sergeant Timmy. And that is fine, as long as everybody agrees about the proper course of action. There's nothing in the agreement that spells out any process for resolution of that, except that it says that it shall be addressed through the chain of command of the Connecticut State Police, which I think is obviously something that they insist upon, and that will never change. But there's no, e, e, that's something very operational, I think. There's nothing in this agreement that says Region 19 thinks this is the proper course of action on a policy basis, and John Carrington disagrees, or Sergeant Timmy disagrees. There's nothing to resolve those disagreements. And I think there's a big potential, and if we were talking about anything else, it's something we could... something we could work out. But I'm very concerned about going forward even through the end of the school year without a resolution to that issue in particular, even though everything is going fine today and everything's gone fine since September with regard to the relationship between the three entities. This is one of the things I think hindsight is 2020 that would have been raised if we had sort of reviewed an agreement beforehand, and it's one of the holes in this agreement that Attorney Deline has identified, a number of them budgetary and otherwise, which we can work on those. This is not for me, this has nothing to do with our budget whatsoever, more money or anything, but that chain of command issue is troubling, and I still don't know how it could be resolved besides we'll just sort of cross that bridge when we come to it, if we come to it. And I'm not sure that that's acceptable to me right now as it sits.
Do other members of the council wish to add to this discussion? All right. We're in an interesting situation. We are missing a member of the council who very much wants to be involved in this discussion. Mr. Bruder has been, is out of town. He will be back for our next meeting. We have a recommendation from, a motion from the Personnel Committee which we, Ms. Berthold, would you like to say, tell us what the Personnel Committee recommended?
Personnel Committee has made the recommendation that effective January 13, 2020, to reject the current SRO memorandum immediately and to terminate the SRO program.
No, that is the recommendation from the Personnel Committee. Would somebody care to make a recommendation to table this agenda item until our next meeting so that we can have an opportunity for more public comment and also for Mr. Bruder to return? Mr. Kochenberger.
Yes, I'll make that motion in part, well, I'll make the motion that we table, then I'll speak to it if it's seconded.
All right.
Or table to the next meeting, which I think is the 27th, and I'll speak to it if it's seconded. Just real brief, for the reasons we've talked about, but I think this is, not only because we have an absent member, but also because that can happen and we always need to move on, although we certainly want Sam here. But I think more important is we've learned, at least I've learned, this is the first time that Region 19 honestly has approached us and talked to us in great, any significant detail about this. That's important. It relieves some of the concerns, certainly not all of them, although a lot of that has to do with the contract procedures that, you know, the former town manager engaged in. And I do agree, and I do not, at least I do not wish to disrupt the relationship that you have, even though I have serious concerns about the agreement itself, but that's, you know, and that's maybe how, probably, we'll see what the vote comes later on. But I think that you, I agree with you that you entered this agreement in good faith and that there are problems on our end, certainly, that we need to address, but in part in terms of hearing from many people in the audience too about the program. I don't think that minimizes the concerns that we have. And it was never focused on what E.O. Smith would do, of course, while, you know, members of Region 19, most of us had, who have kids that go there. It's most more based on what the research shows that happens everywhere and stores, just like we're not, unfortunately, Mansfield is not immune to violence outside. We're also not immune, and no one can be, to a lot of the prejudices and biases that just naturally occur, unfortunately. And these are things that I think can be addressed, but were not addressed in this memorandum of agreement. And that's why I think the time to, not to take any precipitous action, to allow your relationship to continue and for us to consider this at greater length, I think is very important. So I would support, you know, that's why I moved under Mayor's, you know, recommendation to delay any vote on this for two weeks when, and then at least at that time, I, maybe we'll see if anyone supports it, I would not support terminating the agreement, certainly not immediately, but the ability to continue this beyond its termination date, I think, would depend on a very significant commitment by all of us to rework a flawed agreement. Thank you.
Mr. Sharon, you have the second, or you want to make a comment?
Just wanted to make it clear, although I think it already is clear, that everybody on this board and everybody on the Region 19 Board, our parents, our students, all of us are united in support of enhanced school safety and creating a climate that assures that there be no invidious discrimination or inappropriate treatment of students. We all agree on those important things. Question is how best to achieve it, and that's what we can work through as we move ahead through this year and to next year.
Mr. Shaken?
Not, I'll vote in favor of this motion, but I would like just to have staff work on some things to come back next time. So first of all, if it's appropriate to have a conversation, as was suggested by Ms. Woodsen, Woodmenzy, about the public safety need for this, that the board felt, if it's appropriate to have that conversation in executive session, I think we ought to, so the council can get an understanding, obviously not our decision. And we could schedule such a thing so that it, we wouldn't have to kick 100 people out of a meeting in the middle of it and then invite them all back in. And then also, I'm very curious to know the agreement, the MOU that Ram has specifically, and if there are any other regional high schools that are enveloped by a town that is commanded by, whose police force is commanded by a resident state trooper like the town of Hebron. We're a little different than them because they have two or three police officers, regular police officers for the town under the command of their sergeant, but...
We did speak to them. Their position is different because of their... Their position is a little different because they have their own police department. So it is different. Ours is modeled more after like the Tolland and Ellington and Summers.
I understand, but I think that if it's possible, if it's a public document, which I would imagine that it is, to just have a copy of it, the issue specifically that I'm getting at is the Connecticut State Police, the DESB, the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Attorney General sign, doesn't sign agreements with lots of changes in them always, and so I'm curious if there's anything different. Tolland would be another example, I suppose, but, you know, Hebron specifically because it's a regional school and the town is not, the school district itself is not permitted to sort of employ in the same way that a single town-serving school would. I'm just curious if there's anything we can take from that or if there's anything that is different from ours that we should be concerned about, whatever. I'm curious about that.
I actually have another question along those lines. The memorandum says that the jurisdiction of the SRO is the boundaries of the campus. It also says that, that, and I'm not sure whether this, which of the three documents this is located in, but it says that they will try to make any kind of arrest off-campus and out of the sight of other students. If this, if your SROs are Town of Mansfield employees, what happens if a Wellington student runs afoul of the law? Or an Ashford student? Do they have the jurisdiction to go to those students' homes? They are leaving the boundaries of Mansfield.
I don't have a concrete answer for you on that because right now, they do not have a vehicle, so they've not been leaving campus at all.
Seems to me that borrowing a car is not, or they have their own personal vehicles. Mr. Carrington.
Yeah, they can't drive.
As far as I understand, they do, any police officer has, I don't know the exact term, but if they see something wrong, they can carry it beyond their boundaries. I don't know if Attorney knows the language or if I need to call...
I think that's generally in pursuit, they can go beyond their boundaries. I don't know whether...
Sergeant Timmy has said to us, do you want to answer that?
Can we call Sergeant Timmy up?
Yes, please, Mr. Timmy, Sergeant Timmy.
I'm the supervisor of the Mansfield Resident Troopers Office.
Good evening.
Just to clarify, I guess, the mud, the SROs are sworn police officers with arrest powers in the state of Connecticut, okay? They're armed security, they cannot make arrests. They are certified police officers, that's why the board decided to go with the certified police officers, was in the case that they would have to make an arrest. Their ability to do that frees up the resident trooper's office and the resident troopers to remain in town and do our things rather than being not so much a burden, but dealing with the school, the high school issues running amok and over there. So it frees the resident troopers up for policing in the town of Mansfield. The language that was put into the MOU was specifically targeted to, at the time, prevent the SROs who had to be hired as constables of the town of Mansfield from conducting any type of enforcement, when I say enforcement, I'm talking motor vehicle enforcement, off the grounds of E.O. Smith, to start to develop another constabulary within the town of Mansfield, which the town of Mansfield got rid of several years ago. That was the purpose of that. It has nothing to do with the student from Wellington or Ashford. They have the ability to go off-campus, meet the family off-campus, they don't have to bring a family member in, excuse me, into the school, and don't have the ability to go off-campus to meet with the family member and/or student at their residence. And if need be, a trooper would, could assist, and we would either be a resident trooper and/or a trooper from the Troop C barracks in Tolland.
Thank you. That's a very helpful clarification. So the item on our, before us is whether or not to table this to our next meeting. Mr. Carrington.
I just want to make sure that the superintendent and principal are available for our next meeting.
Yes, please.
Two weeks from today.
Okay, we have nods of assent from the two Region 19 folks and from our town attorney, so this will work, okay? Any other comments on, yes, Mr.? Actually, a motion to table is, we've been debating it. Okay, Mr. Freudman.
I would like to speak, but Counselor Berthold has her hand. Could I speak after her, please?
Sure, Counselor Berthold.
Thank you. I will very reluctantly support this motion largely because I agree that it would, having Counselor Bruder here, is important. I'm very reluctant because I believe very strongly, as the research purports, that there is a real and present danger to the students at the campus. There are students of color, and there are students with disabilities, who the research clearly indicates, clearly indicates, that when there is an SRO program, regardless of the intent, regardless of how wonderful folks are, it's a serious, serious issue. This is something that should have been deliberated before the decision was made, not only by one part of our town, but legally, the town council should have been involved with the conversation, and we should have, and we're allowing for it now, an opportunity for public When we asked folks from Region 19 Board to come and speak to us, I did not feel like there was enough evidence to suggest that these real issues had been spoken about, had been thought through, and that the adequate training had been put in place. All of that said, I will support this motion, and I ask, I ask that everybody involved be extra careful and thoughtful, as I know you all are. It's never been in doubt that everybody involved cares super deeply about these kids and that we all want them to succeed. With that said, I will support the motion.
Mr. Freudman.
Yes, thank you. I would like to add to Counselor Berthold's comments. This was deliberated on at least two meetings of the Personnel Committee, and it was, we heard from the superintendent, we heard from the Chair of the Board of Education, we heard from Sergeant Timmy, and again, nothing really changed our perception of the majority of the members on the committee, that there are serious flaws with this program. And furthermore, since the high school has long been able to hire all the armed guards it wants, as any other, as they can hire other staff members, we never felt that this was a real necessity that you have, that you ratcheted it up to the level of school resource officer. I believe Counselor Berthold has well researched on this, on this topic. The presence of these people, when you escalate it up, you know, when you hand out more hammers, more things look like nails. And the evidence does show that their presence tends to be escalatory. A police officer is not getting as many points from his or her higher-ups for saying they defuse situations and, you know, didn't give people the police record or bring, you know, ratchet it up to where it becomes a judicial issue. It always works if you, you always can impress your superiors more when you say you made this many arrests and you refer this many to, require this many people to go through lawyers.
Mr. Freudman?
I understand, okay.
You're not speaking to the motion to table.
Correct. So anyway, I would have, I would have been quite comfortable with us presenting the motion recommended by the committee, but I too would like our, one council member who's not here to have an opportunity to weigh in also, and I'll certainly follow the sentiment of the Chair of the Personnel Committee to table, but I do so with equal reluctance as she is. Okay.
All right, are we ready to vote? All those in favor of tabling, please raise your hand. The motion has been tabled. As you can see, the council takes these issues very seriously. We do, are very cognizant of the feelings of council, of members of the E.O. Smith community, parents, teachers, staff, administrators, and so on. We really do want to, since this is a town position, these are town positions, we do want to be involved in a very significant way in the discussion, and we will continue to do so. And we invite members of the public who have opinions on this issue, particularly those who have not had their opinions expressed tonight, to attend and make comments in the public comment section, or to send us by email their statements of their position. Mr. Freudman?
Yes, thank you. Just a comment, I'm not making another motion, just a comment. It has not escaped my attention that by perpetuating this for yet another two weeks, we're certainly satisfying the sentiments of those who want to keep this program going. You know, it's gone this long without authorization from the council, now it's going a little bit further. But I understand the motion, I even supported the motion to table it, but let's not table it.
Till our next meeting.
Till our next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you for your statements. Sarah Chang could put the statements in our minutes if, do you have them? Yes, okay, thank you. Do you need any, we already voted on tabling.
Do we have, do we get votes?
Yes, we voted to table.
Don't go far, Kevin.
All right, the next, the next, yes, it was unanimous to table.
Yeah.
I'm going to call a recess for one, for two minutes, two minutes only to give you a chance to clear and for something else, too. I'm going to call a recess for one, for two minutes, two minutes only, to give you a chance to clear and for something else, too.
You know, it's my bedtime now.
You're not next, I'm just getting, I'm just getting it ready. We got one more, two more before you.
Two more before me?
Yeah, not, not briefly.
Not what?
Not briefly, but there's two more things on the agenda before you. Sorry.
That's right, I'm getting my exercise.
Is that your husband?
My husband, yeah.
He went to Amity, right? Amity High School. He's from Orange. I know he's old, he's much older than me.
That is your decision as you choose to discharge it necessarily.
Everybody back?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to call the council back to order. The next item on our agenda is the Complete Count Committee. As you may remember, we had a presentation from the U.S. Census asking us to form a Complete Count Committee. Having a complete count in the town of Mansfield is very important. As you know, having an accurate count of the number of citizens in your town, or the number of residents, I'm sorry, the number of residents in your town has a direct consequence on federal and state grants and also on, on the districting for state legislative and congressional seats. So one of the reasons I announced earlier that there was an attempt to do a count of the homeless is partly to contribute to these accurate census figures. So we did adopt a motion to create a Complete Count Committee, and we asked the Committee on Committees to make a recommendation for the makeup of that committee. And on our agenda, we have the recommendation from the Committee on Committees. Mr. Shuren, are you presenting this?
I move to appoint the following individuals to the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee. John Carrington, interim Town Manager; Patricia Schneider, Director of Human Services; Kelly Lyman, Superintendent of Schools; Jaron Armstrong, Director of Off-Campus and Commuted Student Services at UConn; Rebecca Fields, Executive Director, Mansfield Housing Authority; Pastor Ron Baker, First Baptist Church/Interfaith Council.
And this is a committee recommendation, it doesn't need a second. I assume you have gotten agreement from all of these members to serve? The town clerk is nodding yes. Okay. All right, all those in favor, any discussion of this list? Do you want to make any present, any description of what they're there for, or any comments on that?
I, I think it's, it's, it's clear that for obvious reasons, both bureaucratic in terms of funding and in terms of knowing what our town's population is, we need a complete count, and these are well-qualified people to help that along.
Okay. All those in favor of this Complete Count Committee, please raise your hand. Passed unanimously. Next item on our agenda is the UConn Position on Sewer Connections. We have had a situation in which a representative of the University of Connecticut has sent us a letter in which they have stated unequivocally that they consider any housing development off-campus to be essentially student housing and that they oppose any private construction of student housing. The, they've given us a number of reasons of this, but it's partly because, or primarily because they don't, UConn does not wish to lose on-campus students to off-campus. Mansfield's Plan of Conservation and Development specifies that we are going to be looking to build low-income, moderate-income, and working-family housing. We have identified a number of locations for that housing, and they are primarily in the stores' center area, that's the Four Corners area, partly in the new Economic Opportunity Zone. And the town has been recruiting development of various kinds for that zone. So the letter from the university states that they will oppose any, any hookups directly to the UConn-owned sewage pipes. Mr. Deneen, could you come forward and, and describe for us exactly what you understand to be the legal, our legal rights on this issue?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor. So the letter from UConn really laid out, you know, sort of economic reasons why they oppose any student housing on that. And they're free to, in any development, for example, if required a special permit from Planning and Zoning Commission, they're free to appear and express their concerns that are over that, as any other concerned party might be able to. With regard to this sewer agreement that we have, that we've entered into, the Sewer Service Agreement with UConn, the town of Mansfield has control and the permitting authority over direct connections to the, what's called the Mansfield System, which is our pipes, our pumping stations, and things like that. UConn has unfettered discretion with we are approving direct connections to their pipes, their system, the UConn system on that. So to the extent they have an ability to review certain of our connections to make sure that technically and in engineering-wise, they meet the requirements that are on there, the overall flow is, is limited by our flow agreement, the cap that we have in there in terms of capacity that we've, we've entered into. But beyond that, they don't have the right to veto or otherwise reject the permits that may be issued by the town through the WPCA and whatnot to a direct Mansfield connection to our pipes, to our system.
There are two questions that have been raised. One of them is that since the town has fallen below the state-mandated requirement for low-income housing, that a developer has an opportunity to file a special application, and I'm, I don't remember the correct numbers for it.
Eight dash thirty-three G.
Eight dash thirty-three G. I knew there was a thirty in there somewhere. That, that would compel the town to allow the construction of low-income, or affordable housing, moderate-income housing. Does that right apply to the university? Can they override the university?
Well, it would really depend on where the application, where the property that's subject to the application is going. If it's a private developer, the UConn wouldn't have any role. If they were connecting to our system, UConn wouldn't have.
If they're our system, but let's say there's a plot of land which, which would require a connection direct to UConn system, and there is such a plot parcel.
I haven't researched that, and I'm real reluctant for drive-by type opinions, but.
All right, that's a question then.
Eight thirty-three G is an application to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And to the extent that the Planning and Zoning Commission does not have authority to override that, I'll take a look at that, but.
Okay, there was a second question, I'll remember it. Other members wish to comment, Mr. Shagen?
So I'm going back in my memory here, and I know it was someone else who worked on this from your firm because they are, you have a specialist in these agreements. But when we, when we were debating signing this agreement, which I want to say was when I first joined the council, so fifteen or sixteen, that it was finally signed, there was some extended discussion here. Counselor Raymond actually was very concerned that there's nothing in this agreement, an agreement that we have with UConn to, to use their sewer treatment plant, that would prevent them, there's no language in this agreement that prevents them from turning that off. Like, just saying, ah, we're not going to do this anymore, and so your pipes are going to have to go somewhere else. And at the time, what was sort of explained to us was that, no, 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 even though the agreement says that UConn can terminate access, and there's nothing in there for, about like, you know, this building, say, for example, that UConn acts, as we act, as the Water Pollution Control Authority for the sewer that we control. So we, as the town council, are the WPCA for the town of Mansfield. We make decisions about the sewer lines here, whether they're the town-owned sewer lines that go into the UConn plant or the ones in the south end of town that go to Willimantic wastewater. And we are obligated to make regulatory decisions that are different than just because we feel like it. And UConn is under that same obligation as the Water Pollution Control Authority for their sewer treatment plant, for their sewer lines. It strikes me as interesting that the position that they've taken is that they will deny access to what I consider to be a public utility because they do not favor the development of private housing adjacent to campus. Is there any, do they have all of the rights in the world to deny that access, or are they taking a position that would put them in conflict with their duties as a water pollution control authority?
Two-part answer to that is, if someone came in with an application under those circumstances for a direct connect to the UConn portion of the system, what the agreement says is that we don't have a right to tell them they have to do that. Whether they're violating under any of the terms of their license to operate that plant separately, I haven't looked at, and that's really a dispute between that applicant and UConn at that point. The agreement that we signed takes us out of that when it's a direct connect to the UConn system on that, so.
Are there, are there properties in town, this might be a John Carrington question, that, I know part of the reason we have this agreement, it's not just for the lines that we've just constructed at Four Corners, but it's also for the sewer lines primarily here in this part of town, Eastwood, Westwood Road, Willowbrook Neighborhood, this building, the Community Center, E.O. Smith High School, South Eagleville Road, basically. Are there other private properties that are connected directly into UConn's? So we own those lines, right? We set the rates for those lines, et cetera. Do we have any, are there other properties that are connected directly into UConn that are privately held? And are, do we set those rates as the council, even if we don't own the lines?
You only set rates for things that are in our system. I have to correct you, Willowbrook, Eastwood, and Westwood are still owned by UConn.
So we don't set, so UConn sets their rates directly?
Yes. We, we did not want those, they're not in good condition. They wanted to give them to us, but then they realized that we'd have to come to some kind of agreement of value because there's some capital improvements that'll have to be made in those lines. There may be one, Stores Commons may come out and connect straight to the UConn system also. I don't believe we set the rates for them, but Store Center, the condo complex, a couple houses over here on a, and then down to the Senior Center and Housing Authority, that area. Our, ours.
All right. The question before us.
Similar but somewhat unrelated. You have water lines that are traveling through our roads. What's our position on that? Those back to UConn.
Well, there's certain, there's certain statutory rights for the water companies. I mean, I don't know them off the top of my head, but there's.
On their way to UConn, you know what I mean?
For the distribution system for Connecticut Water.
Yeah. Does UConn have a say there?
As to where they extend their water lines?
As to whether or not they can, because I see that as a problem as well. They've already pulled that once already with it in development. That was supposed to happen on King Hill Road, and they denied access to water as well.
It was my understanding that all the water lines within, within the town are owned by Connecticut Water, and also the UConn lines are owned by Connecticut Water. Are they owned by Connecticut Water or maintained by Connecticut Water?
As far as I understand, they're owned and maintained. And if anybody needs a connection to their system, it goes before a committee of which we have majority of the members, but everybody who's along that pipeline from Ellington has representation, and that gets voted on. You know, if a connection is sought. So that, the days of when they controlled the water line and had more, those are gone. It's now Connecticut Water. There's a more process to it than, so what you may be referring to, they still may have some power, but not like they used to.
Right, and I mean, as of just recently, having been on zoning, when that King Hill development came about, which was just, what, a year or so ago, UConn denied them water.
That line may be their, a UConn line, not a Connecticut Water line, I'm not sure.
Which in effect shut that project down. So then again, I wonder if not only we're. So, then again, I wonder if not only we're going to have problems with like this, is it also going to extend to water as well?
I, I don't think that the, and I'm, this is based on recollection, I don't think that the Yukon owns water lines within the town. I think that was one of the parts of that agreement, that the definition of who owned what was, was the boundaries of the campus. Unlike the sewer lines, which actually have run down Eastbrook, Eastwood Road, Eastwood and Westwood, am I correct on that?
Mayor, I'm not prepared to talk water, this was a sewer issue.
Okay.
And I'm sorry to get off track.
Yes, no, but I think that, no, the issue is, really, it's, it's, the letter in front of us had to do with sewer, but the issue also is, can the university tell the town what it will permit to be built on, in town, on-town property within? So, the real question before us is, do we want to do anything about this, about these communications, or the Yukon position? Mr. Sharon?
I have a puzzled look on my face, because I, I'm so woefully ignorant, or perhaps confused, be it water, sewer, roads, anything else, I wish I had a better grasp of what, to what extent Yukon can affect things other than what the university is doing. And if there were a simple, two-page explanation of that, without getting into the technical details of water and sewer, I would be very happy, because it would enable me to understand whether, you know, we can fight and protest and complain, or whether we have a legal right that could be enforced, or whether we should just kind of give up the battle. You know, I just don't know where we are, so, just again, forgive my confusion, but it is confusion.
My guess is that it is the confusion of somebody who didn't sit through those months of negotiation over sewers. Well, it was a while ago. So, perhaps it would be useful if we could get copies of the sewer agreement, and, and some information on, on our rights to control water?
Yes, I just wanted to summarize for tonight, that the letter they sent only applies to connections to lines they own, this really applies to a property off North Eagleville-Northwoods that used to be called Pond Place, or something that, back in there, they would have to connect to a Yukon sewer pipe, because it's not a Mansfield sewer pipe. It doesn't affect where we want to develop, other places where we own. So, Four Corners, we own the sewer pipe, as long as we have the quantity per day to go to their plant, they can't do anything about it, and that's basically the...
But I think there are two issues, that there is their, their legal right perhaps to deny access to a sewer pipe, but they are also appearing at every... Town meeting regarding development off-campus, whether it connects to their sewers or not. I mean, the letters...
The bigger issue is about the housing, and it was brought up the last town gown, but it's a, again, not prepared to talk about it too much, but it's a vicious circle. They, they need the housing on campus to bring in money, basically, and it controls their operations. If they lose that, then they either have to cut services that they may provide outside the boundaries with their, you know, their fire department, police department, or they may have to raise tuition, all things that could be bad for the town, because anything they do is going to have a, you know, whack-a-mole effect, where it may prevent students from coming to Yukon, they go somewhere else, and then the development we have doesn't fill up, and it's, we have to work together, even though I know it's, it's very difficult.
Mr. Shaken?
Yeah, so to that end, I, I think we ought to, so we received a letter in October from Scott Jordan, who's the Executive Vice President, or was then at least, for Administration and Chief Financial Officer for the university. There's a new president since then, of course, where he had, I suppose, just started when this letter was sent, right? He started in August or September, so, anyway, I, I think we ought to respond, the university's taken a number of positions, both in this letter and previously in a number of public testimonies before the Planning and Zoning Commission. And specifically, I think we ought to respond with our concerns about their position around the sewer system. There are a number of properties that the town, or parcels or parts of town, whatever, that the town, whether it's through the Plan of Conservation and Development, or more sort of specifically through the Planning and Zoning Commission, has sort of designated as places that we believe development is right for Mansfield. Yukon is saying here, quoting, "University will continue to oppose this type of development, and respectfully requests the town be mindful of our position, university position when the town considers sewer connections the same. Further, at this time, the university will not approve any requested sewer connections for high-density student housing developments under the July 1st, 2017 Sewer Service Agreement." They're saying, "We are not going to allow any connections." It's spelled out in plain language, and I think, when I look at our Plan of Conservation and Development, and when I read what the Planning and Zoning Commission has turned that into through their rewrite of the regulations, including, and especially, their now-strong provisions requiring affordable housing development, when any new multifamily housing is built in town, this is directly counter to the priorities of the town of Mansfield, which have been identified as developing multifamily, high-density housing in specific parts of town, some of which are adjacent to campus, for a number of reasons that very much include the fact that now that housing is, for me at least, going to be required to include affordable units that are affordable to people who are making area median income or below. So, I think we ought to respond. I don't have anything, like, I don't have a letter to submit or anything, but I think we ought to sort of address the points that they've raised in this letter and things before, as a town, in a letter, and sort of make it clear why we support these things. I will note, just politely, politely, thank you, that we've been working collaboratively with the university for a very long time on all of these things. So, the Plan of Conservation and Development was a collaborative process to some extent. Certainly, all of the planning that this town has done for economic development has been very much in collaboration with Yukon, and down to the details, I mean, we've, you may recall, hired a consulting firm to market four parcels in the opportunity zone, half of which are Yukon, half of which are us, we're splitting the cost with them. They're paying half, we're paying half, and... And, the, the two parcels that are in the town are the two that they've taken the most offense to, which is the parcel on King Hill Road, and the Four Corners parcel of land. So, it, it just doesn't strike me as particularly, there's some cognitive dissonance going on here, that all of a sudden there's opposition to this thing that everyone has been sort of working towards for more than a decade. So, I think we ought to respond politely and sort of explain why the town favors this on behalf of the council. I'd like to recommend that sort of the mayor take a stab at a letter, and we react to it, and, at, at a future meeting, to authorize her to send it to the university in response to this. This information is helpful, I'd ask also that whenever that comes up at a future meeting, we have a copy of their various correspondence and the sewer agreement in our packet, just so the public can have it all in one place. But, I can make that into motion, but it looks like there are a couple people who have questions first, so I won't.
Mr. Sharon?
Yeah, just quick, if we remain in dispute, who makes the decision? Is it the courts?
Well, it ultimately, you can't answer that question just in general. You know, if someone comes in with a planning and zoning application in a properly zoned area, whether it's an affordable housing component under eight dash thirty-G, or just a regular one that includes our affordable housing pieces, and it's connecting to one of our sewer lines, then it's just purely a TPZ decision, and they can appear, Yukon can appear at the public hearing like anybody else, make their comments and objections known, and that's totally up to us. If, and to get back, Councilman, to your original question, things that happen on campus, we have no zoning regulation over them or anything else, that, sort of, one of the bright-line pieces, if it's on campus, it's generally their responsibility. If it's off-campus, it gets, generally, our responsibility as a town for our various regulatory bodies, with the exception of some of these smaller things where, is it a public line, our line, their sewer line, you know, there's a little bit of a gray overlap area. But on-campus is generally up to them, off-campus is our regulatory authorities.
So, if they say, if we want to hook into their sewer line, and they say we can't, who decides?
They do.
That's the end of it?
Yes. If, well, if, if we want to extend our lines, and then take the rest of our lines, and tie it into their system to get to the plant, it's up to them, but that authority cannot be unreasonably withheld. Well, if we, if we can reach an agreement, then we go to court and the judge signs it, so. It's a different standard if a private developer is looking to directly tie to them, they have complete discretion under those ones. On ours, on our general tie-in, if we wanted to expand the system to include another neighborhood, tie-in to them, we have the right to do that, they can't unreasonably withhold that. If a private developer wants to just tie directly, they have carte blanche to decide what they want under those circumstances.
Mr. Carrington?
I just want to stress, a lot of this is, we say this in the Army, the truth changed. You know, Yukon was supposed to get a billion dollars and grow and get all these students. Four Corners, there's probably going to be more retail, but retail is now, nobody's building retail, I mean, it's just not, everything is being delivered by Amazon, and it's just, truth is, so, all this is coming about now because people, you know, it's not a Yukon against Mansfield, it's just, reality is different than what we all saw. We never thought 2020 was going to be the 2020 we're at now, where Yukon's not growing as big as we thought, and the whole retail world has changed. In, in sort of addressing Councilman Shaken's comment, Yukon focuses on, quote, "high-density student housing." We don't have that. That does, that term doesn't exist in our zoning regs or anywhere else. We have multifamily housing that's permitted in various points on that, which includes low-income or moderate-income housing, affordable housing, whatever you want it. So, we're approaching this question from two different places. They're viewing it as a student, high-density student housing, we're viewing it as multi-hous, multifamily housing, including affordable housing as a component of that. So, we're coming at it from just very different points of view on that, so.
The truth underlying it is that ninety, roughly ninety percent of the rental market in this town is university-related, if not actually enrolled students. The, in my conversations with President Katsoulaus, we talked a little bit about this. He said he did not expect that undergraduate enrollment would change because of the financial situation, but that it was one of his goals to double the number of graduate students at the university, and graduate student housing would be a priority. So, in a way, there's some mixed messages coming out of the university as well. Mr. Shaken, I saw your hand earlier.
Yeah, I would just say, I, I understand that the reality is different now than it was a few years ago, and I'm not, I don't misunderstand Yukon's point, several of them at least, there are some that I very strongly misunderstand or disagree with, that have nothing to do with their undergraduate population. We have a free-market society that developers can purchase interest in private land, whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, is not up for us to debate, it's what we have. And in the Four Corners part of town specifically, we have not, we have decided to not create a special design district, which gives us, as government, a slightly stronger role in deciding what goes there. We have a number of parcels that are zoned for multifamily housing development that are privately owned, and we have a number of developers who have approached the owners of those properties in the Planning and Zoning Commission and said, "We'd like to build there, this is what we'd like to build, and this is what our investors think we can make money operating as a business." And that is housing right now. And our new regulations do require that that housing reserve a percentage of the units for people whose income is below eighty percent of the area median income. So, it's low- and moderate-income housing, and that is something this town desperately needs. And so, while I get the point of opposing these things, I also very strongly feel that the housing development is necessary to create a more equitable place. The only way to do that is density. You can't have a neighborhood of houses that are three thousand square feet on two-acre properties and expect your community to attract people of different socioeconomic backgrounds. You need density, and you need government regulation that requires affordable housing development, both of which we have, both of which the university is opposing, by opposing the development of housing adjacent to campus. And also, it's caused a housing market for single-family homes in this town, where houses that are three bedrooms or less are being swooped up every time they go on the market immediately by people who seek to turn them in our neighborhoods into houses marketed specifically to students, and that's an issue this council has dealt with as a nuisance and public safety challenge for a long time. And so, the position that opposes the creation of new supply, et cetera, et cetera.
We understand, we understand, all right. I see, Mr. Osberger, I would just add at this point, that I would be willing to take a stab at a letter to the university that expresses these positions. Mr. Osberger?
Yeah, and I'll just be brief, and, and Mr. Carrington, and it wasn't so much to get off track of, of the motion or the issue that's at hand or mayor, mostly it was just to be proactive in the fact that if it's going to happen with a sewer, it certainly, most certainly is going to happen with the water, or could very well happen in the future, because we've already viewed it as it had to happen with the King Hill project.
I do believe the ownership of the pipes is different, and, and would probably, we are in a much different situation as far as water goes, so, but we can also look into that. But if the council...
Just to keep it back in your head.
Yes, if the council wishes, I would be willing to take a stab at a letter. Does the council wish me to try that? Are there any opposing voices? Mr. Freudman?
Mayor, I'm not opposed to your taking a stab at a letter, I just want to understand what, what is the gist of the letter, as you see it at this preliminary stages, is that, we understand Yukon's control over lines that it owns, like at King Hill, but we, to reiterate, that that is only for areas where they own the lines, not the ones where we own the lines. Or is there something else you think your letter will emphasize?
The gist of the letter that I have in mind is that I want, I want them to stop opposing free-market development on private lands where there is access to sewers. They have said they will oppose any of that, and they will testify to it before planning and zoning. So, what my letter would say is, here's what we have tried to do as a town about housing and affordable housing. We believe in workforce housing, we believe that the housing should be near the major employer, we believe in affordable and diverse housing opportunities, and, and the town operates as a, and we wish they would, we wish they would stop fighting us on this, because it's in the town's best interest, and in fact, if they wish to increase their graduate student body, it's in their interest as well. That's, that's the gist. Yeah. Okay, yeah, of course, of course, but... No, no, I don't intend to draft it here, but the question was, what is the letter going to say, and that's the gist.
So, I agree entirely, it's appropriate to write a friendly letter, and a letter that stresses that, that the town has these goals of increasing affordable housing, of bringing in young families, of supporting young families, some of which may be graduate students, all terrific. I'm concerned that you started with the position of that we don't want them to oppose housing development in town, because they have every legal right to be at any meeting, I know you know this, and I don't want in any way suggest that we're trying to stifle debate.
Okay, got it. I will bring, I'll bring you a draft as soon as I have one, I promise.
I would just, I, I agree with what you said, and I agree with what Councilor Berthelot said, but, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I mean, you can word it, I'm sure you'll word it in a fine way, and I like what you said before, I'm just wondering on whether it's affordable housing or market-priced housing. I'm just curious on what grounds, it's one thing for, for Yukon to come like anybody to a PCC, as the attorney said, and oppose something for whatever reason, if anyone can do that, but, but it sounded to me like Yukon implied, maybe I misunderstood what they were saying at the town university relations committee, or in those letters from, from Scott Jordan, it sounded to me like they felt they could deny a hookup. Maybe I'm reading more into what they said, just said, "We're not happy that you're, that you're letting this or that kind of business," and I, and I really appreciate what you said, that, you know, they're opposing a legitimate, I don't know if you used that exact word, but basically businesses coming in, and they're just opposing it, that, but, but I'm just wondering if Yukon felt that it could oppose a business... But I'm just wondering if UConn felt that it could oppose a business that they don't particularly aren't happy to see come in, other than just go in the public comment at PCC? If they felt they could legally, if they implied that they could deny, legally deny a hookup, even though it's on a town-owned pipe? And I, that sounded to me like what they were saying.
It's not entirely clear to me and I will tell you that in the conversations with President Katsoulaus, he was unaware of the letter. The letter, the letter from, from Mr. Jordan. So, you know, I mean, this is a, this is a relationship in process and I think it's important that we, we make sure that the university at its highest levels understands the town's goals and the degree to which we can collaborate and that, period. And I think, I really don't want to go into any greater discussion of this until you have some kind of text in front of you. And our assessors have been sitting here very patiently for two hours, two and a half hours, waiting to make a presentation and I would really like to allow them to do that. So can we, can we hold this conversation until there's something in front of us? Good. Next item on the agenda is the Assessor's Revaluation Presentation. Mr. Carrington, will you address, introduce the folks who are going to come up?
Coming up is Finance Director Sheri Trahan and the Town Assessor Irene Luciano. Shut off some front lights.
Good evening. As you know, we're required to conduct a revaluation every five years. The last revaluation was in 2014, so our October 1st, 2019 was our revaluation date. And I'm going to turn it over to Irene, our assessor, who's going to give you the results of that revaluation.
Yes, hi, Irene Luciano, Assessor. We did our revaluation in conjunction with Vision Government Solutions again this time and the results are preliminary pending the Board of Assessment Appeals Meeting. So basically, the grand list for the revale is done. The informal hearings occurred in November and now it's just a matter of if people are not satisfied with their values, they have the opportunity to go and appeal in March. The appeal, time to file an appeal is February 1st to the 20th and the hearings are early to mid-March. So that being said, that's the caveat here on the first screen that you have and, oh, great. So the overall changes that we saw from the 2018 list, which was based on the 2014 revale, was the overall change in, of 1.61 percent. So that was, that was actually good news. The market's been pretty steady here in Mansfield, so hasn't fluctuated a lot. That being said, the next screen explains.
Mayor, just make one comment, the materials in our packet say 1.56 percent.
Oh, I'm sorry, it is 1.5. I, see, I told you it was past my bedtime. So, yes, it's 1.5.
There it says 1.6. Has there been an adjustment since the materials went in the packet?
They may have been, there was. The 1.56 is correct, so this isn't the, yes, the wrong one may have been loaded for us, but we'll muddle through it. So the next screen, it talks about the tentative changes in overall assessment by land class. So broken down between residential, special use, which is farm and forest, PA 490 is special use. There was a 0.48 percent increase and, oh, see, yeah. All right, I'll read off the handout, I'm sorry. But it's a little bit different, so there is a 0.3, yeah, 0.3 percent increase. And then the commercial industrial properties had a 5.24, sorry, 5.24 percent increase. I did also, we ran some reports because the question came up about the higher-end market homes versus the more moderate. So I had Brandy do a analysis of the 400,000 and above homes and those actually decreased by 3 percent. And the below $400,000 homes increased by 0.67 percent. So just a little interesting there. It wasn't a huge.
Repeat the numbers.
Sure, 3 percent decrease for the higher-end homes, overall.
Yeah.
Overall, and a almost 1 percent increase for the lower end. I said lower, four, under 400,000. Yeah, 0.67. The higher-end ones we've seen, you know, have come down some, and again, it's really not much when you're talking 3 percent for, you know, 716 million. You know, it's not a huge fluctuation. And then store center. So store center, the assessments, now that screen is what I have here, so that's a good thing. It went down slightly. They did come to the informal hearings. Additional information was brought in with their income, income analysis. And so we were, well, Brandy was able to make a slight change for them. 0.37, if, there's also a couple of parcels that are not included on these totals and those are homes that the three rentals purchased that were UConn homes. And if those are added into the mix, it's just an additional assessment for each year. The, it comes down to just under 0.3 percent reduction instead of 0.37. So again, very minor figures here, changes. Not that they'll still be happy with it, but it's what it is.
You anticipate a challenge from the store center developments again?
I, we had, well, we all met, Sheri and John and I and Brandy met with them for the informal hearings, rather than they just meeting with Vision alone. And, and we had a really productive, we thought, meeting and, but, you know, it's up to them. They certainly have the right to appeal, first to the BAA and then to court if they think they'll get more. But, but we weren't giving them anything at the hearings, we were listening to them and they provided additional information.
Yeah, just, just to add to that a little bit, the purpose of the informal hearings was really to go through the data that was used in the, in the valuation and make sure that everything was accurate. And there were some areas that were considered common areas, things like that, some things that we had to clarify. So they provided us with additional information, we verified that information and there was a small adjustment made for that, based on factual information, that there was a change. Now whether they, they still come back, as Irene says, it's hard to say. We have not heard from them yet.
Because in the last round of things, we ended up spending quite a bit of money and months in court cases and it would be very nice if that didn't happen again.
And that didn't even go to trial last time.
Mr. Freudman.
As I recall, maybe you can fill in the details, but I think there were two events. And, you know, one I was particularly offended at because they had just Hart Realty, no relation to Hart, we know, but I had bought property on Dog Lane from Leyland and had paid a certain price for it and, and they were actually appraised. A year later was when the next valuation came and they were actually appraised for a million and a half dollars less than they were just, had just paid. And they still had the, they still.
Mr. Freudman, I don't, Mr. Freudman, I don't want to go over what has happened in the past.
You're correct.
We are really talking about the present.
But then there was a repeat of that on some other properties and I think there, it was to the tune of two or three million dollars that we wound up reducing the appraisal. And again, on advice of the town attorney, we didn't fight it. And I'm just concerned, is there, is this going to, do you know that this is going to continue? That they're just going to not want to pay what, that's why I was giving, that's why I was giving the first example, that they had just bought property for X and you appraise, appraise them for a little less than what they had just paid and they still felt they could sue us? Even though what you pay for something is a market price, you know?
They have the right to appeal.
We have the right to, to not give them what they're asking for.
We will follow the appropriate process based on our town attorney advice.
Yes, okay, please continue. The next.
Apologize, we're having troubles with the slides, it doesn't appear to be.
It's the shift in tax burden that we're, I'm looking at.
Right, we did, we missed a slide though, that, that spoke to, if you look in your packet, page 46, where we give some examples of, of why the commercial industrial utility went up so significantly. And we just wanted to provide some supporting information for that. Is it not there at all? Okay, apologize, we'll, we'll speak through this and it's in your packet on page 46.
So there was a growth of commercial and industrial for, of nearly 12 million, an increase. And part of the reason for that was the hotel, Nathan Hale, former Nathan Hale Hotel, came back onto the taxable grand list. It was purchased just in this past June, so I had added that back on for the remaining days for the 17 grand list, just 19 days, I believe. And then it came on fully for the 2018 grand list and those were both with certificate of corrections. It wasn't part of the original figures that you saw, that I had earlier. And then this year for 2019, it's also going to be on fully taxable, not the land because UConn still retains the land, but the building is going to be assessed at 4,506,200. So that's a pretty good increase back on to the grand list. Also, the new apartments on North Frontage Road, the construction is going on with those nicely, so those are being picked up. For 2019, it's just a few foundations and beginnings, but I went by the other day and they're really getting, making good progress. Other increased assessments were more for some of the shopping centers in town, including Big Y, Stores Common, Mansfield Plaza where Dollar General and Red Rock is, College Mart, former Best Western and the Holiday Mall.
Why would those assessments go up?
That's just for the revaluation, they went up.
Occupancy or?
I think just for the, just for the commercial increase, yes.
Okay.
They also do take into consideration the income approach when they're valuing those properties. So the next is the shift in burden by land class. And this was interesting, we had done this for the 2014 list as well. So we see between 2009 and 2019, whereas 2009, it was, the ratio was 85 percent residential and 15 percent commercial with the construction that we've had in store center, et cetera. We see the burden is shifting a little bit, so it's 74 percent residential to 26 percent commercial. And then I just did a little bit on the tax-exempt, which of course includes UConn. So the overall change between the 2018 and the 2019 revalued list is it went up 3.2 percent. And the taxable, the bottom there, the taxable, we see that in 2013, 42 percent taxable compared to 58 percent exempt and in 19, we now have 38 percent taxable, 62 percent exempt.
And does that have to do with additional construction?
Yeah.
That is non-taxable, is that primarily the United Health Services Building?
No, it's primarily UConn with their new tech buildings.
Oh, the new buildings, okay.
Yeah, Discovery Lane, Discovery Road.
Do you know offhand, I know it's not part of this presentation, obviously we're incredibly unique as a municipality in that we have a taxable grand list of $970 million roughly and exempt grand list of $1.5 billion. Almost all of that in terms of property value is UConn. Do you know offhand how much of that is UConn versus Natural Health Hospital, the United Services Building, some of the other nonprofit facilities we have in town?
Yeah, that information is available. I don't know if I have UConn broken down here, I thought I did, um, oh, yes, I do.
Or how much is pilot versus not, I suppose is a good way to ask that question.
I have the, I do, I have that, let me just see where the paper is. Well, I had it in my lap while I was sitting at the thing for two and a half hours.
Perhaps you can get it together for us and bring it to the next meeting.
Just a curiosity of mine, it's not important.
Okay, so for the 2019, the total is 1,500, well, a little different there, but 1, 1,568,000, 268,825. Of that, the state-owned is 1,468,000, million, 913,300. Of that, the non-state-owned is 99,355,525. So, it's quite a difference.
And in that non-state, is that primarily Natural Health Hospital?
No, we have all the school buildings, the town hall, the community center, yeah, the Cannon Center, all the town buildings as well, as well as churches and things. So I can check the difference here.
That's okay, that's enough, yeah.
That's fine, thank you.
Can I ask another question? There's been increased, so you, you talked about the increase in commercial property, some of which, most of which are, a big amount of which is construction and the hotel back on the grand list, but there's also, do you expect appeals from the retail centers that have had increased development? If, or if you're not comfortable answering that, does John or Sheri expect appeals? It's a common practice.
It is, that's the problem, is that it's become a common practice, not here, it's all over. And the CAAO, Connecticut Association of Assessing Officers, has for a number of years been trying to get through the legislature, certain bills passed, saying that tax reps shouldn't be allowed to just offer to the business owners, that they will go to appeal for them and just take a cut of what they make, that they should be licensed appraisers and so forth. That being said, it hasn't passed yet for them to do that, for them on contingency. So basically, the commercial owners don't have a lot to lose by going for it and that's, that's not just here. So I, we can't really say what they're going to do or not going to do. I don't think they have a lot of shame.
Well, every, I mean, I think every revale period, and I came on the council at the very, at the end of the last one we did four years ago, every revale period, we will obviously get appeals from. get appeals from, properly, from all sorts of different property owners, but I think we ought to expect as a council, over the next year, that we'll hear from folks who are represented by these attorneys that specialize in this, who charge on a contingent fee. It's, it's just so common in towns, and that's exactly what happened with Store Center four years ago, which, just because it came up before, I will say, my recollection of that settlement is that we did not just do whatever our attorney said we should do, but instead we settled on a value for that property that our attorney evaluated to be almost exactly what he thought we would get from a judge if we had spent the money to fight it in court. So we actually achieved a very advantageous settlement for the town when we settled that case then, without having to go to court. But I'll just say, as a counselor, I expect that we're gonna have some of this that we'll have to deal with as a council, with Kevin, over the next several months or a year or so, because this is just kind of what happens every time there's a revale now. Every business owner in town whose property value went up in this revale is gonna get a letter from all sorts of companies that do this work, saying, "Hire us, and we'll do it for free, and we'll just take the money, when, some of the money you make back when we win."
All right. I, I'm gonna ask if anybody has any other questions. I really want to call your attention to the time. It is ten minutes of ten. We are holding staff here. We have a couple of smaller, we have a couple of potentially lengthy issues before us, and I really would like to keep moving as concisely as possible. Does anybody have any further questions? Mr. Freudman?
I do. As, I think you all have given a copy, I had, I had sent Manager Carrington some questions in anticipation of this presentation, and I really appreciate the, the written response that was sent back, and I, I would ask at this time that it would, it could be just included as a communication or something in the next packet, so people will, everybody will know what I was asking and what the, what the responses were. It's on two sides of the sheet that I think most of you were given. I had a brief question, though. I had asked about the, the changes in the grand list in Store Center, which was roughly a hundred and nine thousand, and Mr. Carrington, I'm sure with help from either or both of you or your office, offices, has it year by year. I'm just surprised it's all kind of about the same, a hundred and six and a hundred and nine million, a hundred and nine mil, just changes by a few hundred thousand. I would have thought that at least in some of those cases, there might have been a, a drop because of the way we agreed to reduce the, the valuation on those properties, where we were threatened with a suit if we didn't reduce it, and we went ahead and reduced it. It doesn't seem to show a drop on these numbers.
So recall that we settled also after the fact, so the grand list, and correct me if I'm wrong, Irene, but I don't know if we went back to adjust the grand list, but we adjusted the taxes, so they got a refund. Recall? On the first two years. Yes. And then, then in two thousand, I'm sorry, that, we, so Sherry's to the point, it was, the taxes were adjusted the first two, not the assessments.
But not the grand list? I thought they were challenging the appraisal, which would of course have been the assessment.
Right, but we gave them tax credits totaling two hundred seventeen thousand seven hundred and nine dollars, and that was spread out over the, the years. And additionally, there was a percentage increase that started off with the seventeen, sixteen grand list, seventeen and eighteen grand list. So the values actually went up a half a million each of those grand lists, as well as then the tax credits were applied. So the tax credits were a separate thing from the assessments.
So you did reduce the appraisal or did not? You're saying that you left the appraisals kind of the same or spread out with a slight smaller increase, or...
Yeah, well, I have this, I have this spreadsheet here, exactly what was done. It's probably easier to just pass that around at some point than to try to...
Yeah, okay.
Could I suggest that you, that you send members of the council this, this information by mail, and, and we can, if we have further questions, we can raise them later, at a later date. I, I am really concerned, we have a committee report that has to come from Mr. Kochenberger, and Mr. Kochenberger has to leave in a short period of time, so I, I would like to move along if we can. Any other questions of the assessor? Thank you very much for all of this information. It's always helpful and revealing, so...
Our apologies for the wrong thing, but...
Can we assume that the numbers that we have in our packets are correct?
They're accurate, yes. Like I said, except for just a couple of houses that UConn per, that three rentals purchased with maybe future development in mind, but we're not, haven't heard anything more about that.
Okay.
Right up here, yeah, yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much. I'm sorry to keep you so late, but that's the way we go. All right, the next item on our agenda is the Human Rights Commission, and Mr. Kochenberger.
Thank you. I, we, we have a motion in the packet, which I, with one change, I'd like to put on the floor, and that changes, well, I'll, I'll read the motion as I, I suggested. I move effective January thirteenth, two thousand twenty, to establish a Human Rights Commission with members appointed by the Committee on Committees. If there's a second, I'll go into, chaired by, well, I'm sorry, establish a Human Rights Commission with members appointed by the Committee on Committees, because we don't, I don't think we want it chaired by the town council.
Recommended.
Recommended, sorry. Thank you. Yes, because the town council, yes. Thank you for that.
Second?
Second, but, but Ms. Berthold, would you like to hear to speak to your motion?
Just to briefly, one thing, in terms of the change, there are only, as far as I know, at least, there are only committees chaired by someone on the town council, or official town council committees, finance, Committee on Committees and personnel, so I think, and I think that's a useful practice, so, or, or bright line. So I do not think that this should be chaired by someone on the town council. Doesn't mean they couldn't, someone couldn't be a member, but not as chair. More importantly, I, you know, as to the merits of this, I think this is an excellent idea. This is becoming, I think, more common around the country, and in a sense of both, in terms of a broadened sense of what human rights mean, as well as the implications it can have, not simply in a traditional context, but also in terms of disability rights, gender, and other areas. So I think this is, you know, I fully support, I very much support this. If, you know, there's always an issue of will any committee get enough volunteer members, because we're all volunteers, and will, I assume, I bet this will, but that's, you know, I don't think that's, if it doesn't, then that, that speaks to what the public wants. But I do think that this would, I think we'll get members on this, and I think it would be a very good addition to the town.
I, I would like to remind members of the council that we received a Silver Award for Sustainability this year at the CCM Convention. One of the elements of sustainability is equity, and you may recall that former mayor, former manager Kennedy convened a meeting of department heads, it was very well attended, to discuss issues of equity. That was only a beginning. I think this is, this is the next step. I would ask the Committee on Committees to also prepare a charge for this committee, not just to recommend members. Mr. Ossberger?
Yes, I have just a clarification as to why this is either a commission or a committee. Is there a difference between the two, or should it be called a committee? Do we need some clarification on that?
I think human rights commissions are generally called commissions. I think it's a practice of language rather than of structure.
It doesn't have a, you know, why a committee and not a commission, or why a committee, or not a committee, commission, or a committee? I'm just curious.
Actually, a commission, I think, is, by definition, implies study, that there's a, a, a charge to evaluate existing practices, not just to enforce or, or investigate.
By that charge, then, is it redundant by utilizing or creating this committee if it's not something that's being evaluated by, say, HR?
No, it's...
Well, beyond fraud and...
Mr. Kochenberger, do you wish to answer that question?
Well, wait, well, I'm sorry. I mean, I mean, certainly, HR, those functions, you know, in terms of employment can be, can be part of it.
And thereby redundant?
No, because human rights goes, you know, first of all, it's not simply town, you know, town is employer. It goes well beyond that in terms of issues of sustainability, access, you know, environmental justice, access, you know, disability, access to town events, town property, so it goes well beyond simply an employment relation, if that's simply one aspect. I think whether it's called a commission or a committee, I think, you know, I, I don't think there's any, as far as I know, I'm not aware of any substantive difference there is. I usually hear it called commission, so that just seems natural to me. I don't feel strongly about it, either way.
Just quickly, looking it up, they are essentially the same thing, in terms of dictionary definition, though committee says in the dictionary typically consisting of members of a larger group, which is not always the case here in any event, but they mean the same thing.
Mr. Freudman?
Well, thank you. And I want to, before I continue with my remarks, I want to thank you, Mayor, for mentioning that there should be a charge for this committee. In fact, I thought that, that motion as presented was flawed for that, for that reason, even though, as well as that I don't agree with the, with the gist of the motion, but there really should be a charge. While I'm on that topic, I, I would urge, if this motion does pass, that the charge be made very specific, that we're just dealing with issues in the town, you know, advisory committees, and I agree with the comment that whether it's called a committee, commission, it's pretty much, pretty much the same thing. These are supposed to deal with issues in the town. I'm concerned because things having to do with, with human rights and, and social justice, they tend to expand and expound on lots of issues, way beyond the town, way, way beyond the borders of the United States, and they, they tend to bring in many larger issues. And I would want it understood in the charge, if this does pass, that we're just dealing with issues in the town. Remember that what got this started is that at the last council meeting, one citizen, Mr. Matoma, who's in the audience, had suggested it, and his comments and his letter actually are, are on page nine of this packet. And I remember asking Mr. Matoma in public comment, and I'm very limited in, in what I'm, I'm allowed to ask, under just limited clarification, is, was he aware of policies, ordinances, or regulations in the town that were violative of human rights? And he said no, or hadn't looked, 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 looked at them, or been, you know, whatever he said, he didn't come up with any specific violations of human rights. In his letter, however, he mentioned, I think, two incidents in Mansfield, well, there was a third, something in the middle school, but I, it was too vague, I couldn't make, make anything out of it. But one of the issues he mentioned was the infamous case at the University of Connecticut, where a couple of students were said to use the N-word walking through a parking lot. Well, the university dealt with it immediately. The offending student was, was cited, and must have been brought before the judicial system, because I just heard last week, he was given accelerated...
Mr. Freudman?
Yeah.
I, we got your point, and I, I assume that the Committee on Committees has heard your argument, and they will, will come back to us for the recommendation.
Nobody has heard, this is the first time we're debating this, and I would like some leeway to discuss it. I was recognized, and I do have...
I know, but it's ten o'clock, and Mr...
Well, you can table this in the next meeting, but you're...
Well, it will be tabled, it, not tabled, but when we get the charge is when we have this, this further discussion.
Mayor, I'm, I'm speaking to the motion, please. I, I ask you to be, please, treat all members with, with equity. It's, it's simply dealing with human rights.
I'm trying to get us out of here before everybody falls asleep, please.
Mayor, I'm going to have to ask you to let me speak, as I was recognized, and I do, do appreciate, I recognize the lateness of the hour, and we can have shorter agendas, or, or not, just call this, this whole motion off. Now, if, if there's anything going on at UConn, first of all, we would have no jurisdiction over it, and secondly, I would suggest on that issue at UConn, if Mr. Matoma is so inclined, he could suggest to the Board of Trustees of UConn to have a Human Rights Commission for the university, but we have, we would have nothing to say about something at UConn. And again, I stress, UConn dealt with it quite forcefully.
Mr. Freudman, we understand your position. Now, I want to move on to the next item on the...
I don't, I'm not ready...
I want to get a vote on whether or not...
I will insist, as a point of order, if I have to, I was, I am recognized, and I have the floor. With respect, I am recognized, I would like to speak to this, and the issue...
Would you please hold your comments until we have a document in front of us?
The issue, please, the issue, example...
No, I'm asking you to wait until the discussion is appropriate. It is not appropriate at this time.
I'm trying to claim my opposition to the, to the motion itself.
I understand what you're saying.
I'm not interested in seeing a charge. Now, please...
Are you opposing the creation of the Human Rights Commission?
Mayor, we can get into a shouting match if you want, but this is happening too often, you reckon, you know, Mr. Sheik, and I know, was allowed to expound at length...
Well, I was gonna cut him off, too.
From sewer, he went to water and, and affordable housing, and I, and I had no problem with that, but you're not giving me...
I did, and I did cut him off.
...leeway to talk about something that is, that is on the agenda that I've been recognized for. You know, I would be pretty much done by now, and, and I, you know, don't need to go around...
I understand.
Now, the example that he cited from the town was two very high-ranking officials, and allegations made against them in, in the summer, and you know, within days, both individuals were gone. So I don't know what more the town could have done. Now, please, to the motion. I don't believe we need a Human Rights Commission. If you do have a charge, make sure it's just specifically to deal with alleged issues in the town. I'd like to point out that the state of Connecticut has a Human Rights Commission, okay? It's at, it's, in fact, it's at nine ninety-nine Asylum Avenue, and their phone number is eight six zero five six six seven seven one zero, rather than the phone book. We also, every year, we ascribe to the Fair Housing Guidelines, and there's, it's posted around Town Hall. I believe it's supposed to be, I think, posted, and there are offices in Boston for the federal office, and a dress and phone number for the state office in, in Hartford. We also, like every employer in the town, ascribe to the Equal Opportunity Commission guidelines. I could, I could go on, but, you know, this is a, this is a solution in search of a problem. It's not like we don't have procedures in this town that are quite strict about dealing with allegations of racism or, or any discriminatory behavior. So I, I, why do we need yet another committee in this town? We have over fifty of these advisory committees, we're, we're clogging up the, the gears of government. And again, if there were specific problems that could not be addressed in any way, I believe if anyone went to, to the town manager with a credible, sustainable, substantial, with substantial evidence of discriminatory behavior, he'd be on it in a, in a minute. And if that doesn't happen, citizens could always bring it to the attention of the council. So I'm not sure, I don't see the need for this, and that's why I'll oppose the motion. Thank you for allowing me to speak. It wasn't so bad, was it?
Yes, it was.
Why?
Because, of course, it was because you're a Republican. Of course it was. At ten, at five after ten, of course it was because you were a Republican. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Opposed? We have one opposed, Mr. Ossberger, I didn't see your hand.
Abstained.
Mr. Ossberger abstains. All right, the next item on our agenda is the two thousand twenty-one Budget Review Calendar. I'm just going to call it to your attention. If anybody has any problems with any of those dates, please let me or, and/or Mr. Carrington know. It's based on the patterns that were established in the past. Uh-huh. Do we need a motion to approve? Mr. Kochenberger, please make it.
Um, yes, and this is on page fifty-five. I move to adopt the proposed Budget Review Calendar for fiscal year two thousand twenty slash two thousand twenty-one, as presented by staff.
Comments or corrections? Mr. Freudman?
Thank you. I'd like to make an amendment to this, and then if it's seconded, I'll speak to it. So this is not, should be counted as, not counted as one of my two opportunities to speak on the main motion. My, my, my amendment is that the meetings designated in the packet on page fifty-two that are called Budget Review, and then there's one called Budget Discussion. That's four meetings. The one that's scheduled here for April, April first, sixteenth, twenty-second, and twenty-third be designated as special meetings. as special meetings.
I believe that any meeting we hold that is outside the schedule that, that was adopted in December has to be a special meeting. Yeah?
There's a motion on the floor, there's no second.
Oh, okay. Mr. Kottchenberger, has the, did the Finance Committee review this calendar?
Amendment, we just made a motion to amend it, but no second.
Okay, is there a second to Mr. Freudman's?
I, I will second it.
Okay. All right, so there was a second to the.
The main, to the main motion?
The main motion.
Okay.
No.
I seconded Peter's main motion.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
David has made a motion to amend that to make them special meetings not.
And Mr. Osberger has seconded it.
May I speak to, in support of my amendment?
Yes.
Thank you. I believe we must be the only legislative body in the land that reviews a budget and calls these workshops. Usually, when, you know, the House of Representatives Ways and Means Committee, or the State of Connecticut's various committees, like Committee on Higher Education, when they meet, members can, going through a program line by line, this is an opportunity for members to suggest that we spend a little more here or a little less there, and that can, that can be made to stick. And that's done, the way you make it stick is if you can make a, a motion, and if it's seconded, and voted on, and passes, then that becomes what goes in the final budget that's brought to the council for adoption. I don't know how long this has been going on in Mansfield that we have, we call these workshops, but they have the interesting product, what, what results from that is you can't really change anything in the budget. I don't believe it's my role as, as a member of the legislative body on the town, that budget meetings consist of nothing but all of us here, sitting as pupils, listening to the executive branch explain to us what's in the budget and why this line item is there. I can understand that, but we never do anything different. We never debate a program, cut a program, increase here, decrease there, and I'm, and then we're told, if anyone does mention it, and it's usually someone in the minority party, you're told, well, we can flag it. But flagging doesn't mean anything. This flagging means we can discuss it some more and get you a clarification, but then you can't really change anything until there's the final meeting there at the end of April to adopt the budget, and by then you can't go through hundreds and hundreds of lines that you may have had, you know, you reviewed in more detail at the time that we had these budget reviews. So I think we should do what is done, I'm sure, in every body that reviews a budget that has legislative authority, that at the time you're looking at programs line by line, that is the time to propose amendments and vote on them, so it gets into the final product.
Mr. Shaken.
Thank you. I urge my colleagues to oppose this amendment. I will be brief, as brief as I can. First, every legislative body that I'm aware of considers budgets for the government that it oversees in exactly this way, including the one I'm most familiar with, which is the Connecticut General Assembly, which splits into subcommittees and talks without voting on anything with state agencies, the executive branch in that case, although we don't have an executive branch, even though Mr. Freudman commonly says that.
What?
And Mr. Carrington's an employee of the town council. We don't have a separate branches of government in the town of Mansfield.
Sure we do.
Mr. Freudman, you're out of order.
This is, this is how legislative bodies need to consider a long and complicated document. We can't do it all in one sitting, and we, I am very opposed to voting on individual pieces of the budget as we go. The budget is a document that should be taken as a whole, it should be amended as a whole, not amended department by department, piece by piece. Certainly amendments can and should be made to the final budget and proposed at the adoption of budget meeting, which we have scheduled as taking place possibly on April 27th, if this passes, maybe April 29th. But that is after a long process where we consider each part of the budget individually. I encourage all of my colleagues to look deeply at the budget and make amendment proposals. Both parties have in the past come to the adoption meeting with ideas, with full proposals to, to revise budgets, and I encourage everyone to do that again. However, keeping the budget meetings as working sessions of the council, which prevents us specifically from voting on those nights, and just hearing and considering each individual topic, asking questions, giving staff time to research the answers to our questions and respond at future meetings, is exactly the right way to do things, and so I encourage my colleagues to reject this amendment.
So just as a matter of clarification, the paper in front of us does not identify the budget review sessions as workshops, but it is.
The narrative.
It is my understanding that they are to be workshops, and that this is according to our very longstanding process. I have very clear recollections of adding and subtracting to individual items on the budget. So I think that Mr. Freudman's statement that we never do that is untrue. We actually do, but it's very helpful to get to the end of the budget before you decide where you're going to cut or add. Mr. Osberger.
Just briefly, I can, I get the gist of what David's going with this. I guess the phraseology, budget workshops, you know, perhaps, you know, I'm just a noob at this, but it just appears like it's cavalier, it doesn't seem like it's more serious.
No, we have a, in the Rules of Procedure, there's a definition for workshops, and just one second.
I mean, as this is a serious issue, it's a budget, and I can understand where he's coming from.
I, I can, if somebody wants to look for it, it's in the Rules of Procedure, I have them here. But in any case, this is the format that we have used. There are no votes taken, although requests for further information are given. At every, at every workshop, a request is made, requests are made for further information, and at every workshop, the staff presents answers to our questions. Sometimes it helps us to, to make cuts, sometimes it's explanations of where money has moved that look like transitions, but are in fact just moving money from one account to another, you know, reassigning numbers or something, so.
So in effect, we would perhaps go line by line?
We do in the course of the discussions, yes, but it doesn't mean that we vote on adds or cuts at those discussions. We do the, we, look, let's say I want to cut a police officer, all right? So when we have the discussion on public safety, we have all of that discussion, we find out how much it costs to cut a police officer, what the consequences of cutting the police officer. And when we do our final budget discussion, I say I want to cut a police officer, and we vote on cutting a police officer. But it isn't until you get to the very end, that after you've done public works, that after you've done human services, that after you've done the school budget, that you understand fully the consequences of cutting a police officer. So it doesn't make sense to make those decisions before you know the whole story.
So we just have to keep notes.
Yes, and the town, the staff provides extensive notes.
I was gonna call it, which I almost, I almost never do, but I will call the question at this point.
All those in favor? Yeah, second, is there a second to call the question?
Voting on the amendment or the?
I'm calling the question. I want a second on calling the question on the amendment.
The amendment.
Yes, seconded by Ms. Barthol. All those in favor of calling the question, please raise your hand. All right. All those in favor of Mr. Freudman's amendment, please raise your hand. Mr. Freudman's amendment fails.
Are we?
All those in favor of Mr. Freudman's amendment, please raise your hand. All those opposed to Mr. Freudman's amendment, please raise your hand. Mr. Osberger? Okay. The amendment fails. Now, we are back to the budget calendar. Any further discussion of the budget calendar?
Ask the question, Mayor, and I just, we did not specifically look at this at during Finance Committee, but it was certainly available.
Okay.
I don't think that's, it doesn't have to go through us anywhere.
So the motion is, the motion is to adopt the proposed budget review calendar. Has somebody made this?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Yes. Opposed? Okay, on to the next thing. The next item on our agenda is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and this is Ms. Tryon. Yes, and? Yes, please do.
This is on page 59 of the packet. I move effective January 13th, 2020, to accept the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and the state and federal single audit reports for the year ending June 30th, 2019, as endorsed by the Finance Committee.
Do you wish to speak to your motion?
We don't need a second. We had, you know, this, we discussed this at the Finance Committee, which many, which many of us were there at, and I'm not going to try to summarize 100, 150 pages of audit, other than we received a very, very favorable response. There was one correction that needed to be made, that most towns have to make in terms of the language on federal bids, but other than that, the audit was very positive.
Any further comment? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Unanimous, all right. The next item on the agenda is the proposed salary transfers. Mr. Kottchenberger.
I move effective January 13th, 2020, to approve the salary transfers for fiscal year 2019-20, as presented by the Director of Finance in her correspondence dated January 9th, 2020. And I forgot, this is on page 231, by the way. So effect, correspondence dated January 9th, 2020.
This is a committee report, so it doesn't require a second. Would you care to speak to it?
We went through this at some length at, at the meeting. If there are questions, we could, we could certainly ask the Director of Finance to come up, but I, I have no questions. I'm ready, I am ready to vote if others are.
Mr. Osberger.
Not that this is important, but you have 231, we have 225 over here. I don't know if that's important.
What it is, is they're electron, we have, because people wanted this printed out a certain way, the hard copy changes the page now.
Okay, just understand.
Council Kottchenberger is using the proper format, because we want to go electronic, but because people haven't migrated to that, the paper copy numbers will be different.
Thank you.
Note that use of the word proper, it's not always applied, so I'm very happy about this.
All right. Yes, the, the.
Is to approve the salary transfers, yes.
And quite a few of us were at that meeting, I don't believe. Does anybody have any questions about these transfers? All right, all those in favor?
I don't believe it's been seconded.
It doesn't need one because it came out of a committee. All those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, okay. Reports of council committees, personnel?
I don't have a report for personnel, but it wouldn't be a report, but the Committee on Committee has some recommended actions. Does, do you want that as a report?
Recommend act, recommended actions for whom?
From the Committee on Committees.
This is an appointment.
You're, you're preparing for the Committee on Committees at this point?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, go, please.
The Committee on Committees recommends the following motions, based on actions taken at their December 12, 2019 special meeting, and their January 9, 2020 regular meeting. First, move to appoint Shelby First and Theodore Buskey to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee for terms ending September 1st, 2021. Second, move to appoint Agriculture, Agriculture Committee Alternate Diane Dorfer to the position of full member. Third, move to reappoint Nancy Ron and Melissa Tindell as an Agricultural Committee Alternate for a term ending October 13, 2021. And finally, move to appoint Sarah Coffold to the Arts Advisory, Arts Advisory Committee for a term ending March 1st, 2021.
Do you wish to comment on your motion? Doesn't require a second coming from a committee.
Each of these folks came to us, excellent credentials, and very much wanting to serve the town, and I hope you'll support the motion.
Comments or questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Passed unanimously. Finance Committee, you've heard from, anything else from Finance Committee?
No.
Okay, so those are our committees.
This committee, this Personnel Committee.
I have nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
I, I would like to.
Mr. Freudman?
Yeah, we talked about a few things, you know, the people from the high school were there, you know, discussed the SRO, so, you know, these are things that were discussed. Committee did meet, and there was some discussion also about the next steps, as was charged to the committee by the council to look into who would be the consultant for, looking for a new permanent town, town manager, so we, we discussed that. And I'd, I'd leave it to the chairman to report on that when there's more to report on. There was also something on, believe it or not, the Rules of Procedure, you know, that had been referred to the Committee on Committees, where we're not seeking to change the rules of, of procedure, but, you know, there was a, a point of clarification going back to an earlier meeting shortly after the November election about reporting comments of council members, and I believe the mayor had said that maybe comments should only be about things on the agenda, and of course, I challenged that, and the town manager referred it to the town attorney, and he affirmed what I, I'd always thought, that, that you could comment on other issues impacting the town, you know, whether it was on the, on the agenda or not. That's how it's always been, and he said that's how, you know, should still be doing that on that part of the agenda. And finally, and I would really feel better if Council Sherin wanted to discuss it, or, you know, it was a question about when we say this public comment, and you can only ask something of the person making public comment to clarify the intent. There was a feeling by the majority of people on, on the, the majority of the voting members of the Personnel Committee, and perhaps all of them, that, that, that should also be interpreted to mean you could ask for some amplification if you weren't sure. It's not just to clarify, but maybe amplify the remarks. Anyway, Council Sherin explained what he was after a whole lot better than I can, and it made a lot of sense.
I don't want to take time with it now, but I, I, my feeling was that there are points where additional information that don't quite fit the dictionary definition of, quote, clarification, would be helpful to the discussion, and, but let's defer that to another.
And it would be up to the mayor's discretion to allow that, that, that expansion of the wording of clarification of intent, to allow some expounding.
Thank you, all right. Any comments on departmental advisory committee reports? Petitions, requests, and communications? I, I do want to comment that we look forward to working with the UConn USG External Affairs Committee. I suspect even they are asleep and not paying attention to us at this point, so.
You never can tell.
Not paying attention at this point, okay.
Yeah.
I, I don't believe. Unless it is absolutely important that something be discussed, I really am going to ask you to move forward. Mr. Freudman?
I will be brief. This is the part on petitions, requests, and communications. I have a, a comment on and a request of the town manager regarding item 11B, that is the store center, LAZ Parking Management Financials. This is not the kind of report we've gotten in the past from LAZ. Mr. Carrington, that one-page report with the numbers on it, four of which are, are the same numbers, you know, it's nothing. Typically, their report was a three- or four-page report, and, and just to be specific about what I would like to ask you to, to request from LAZ, in, in keeping with their past reports, is that in that three- or four-page report that they've given us in the past, one of those pages shows column by column by month, and I would like the last six months of 2019, July through, through December, and then going across, you have revenues and expenditures, and the revenues had three lines. One was labeled transient parking, the second line was violations, and the third was monthly parking. Those were revenues. So going across, those were the three lines for revenues, and then going down on the columns would be for the six months, the last six months of 2019, and maybe an extra column for the total for those six months, for six months ending, you know, December 31st. That is the format they followed. I would ask that. I would ask that if that—when that is made available, it'll be put in the—in a communication, hopefully at the next meeting.
All right. Items for future agendas? Mr. Freudman?
Well, I brought this up once before, I think about a year ago. It wasn't put on the agenda then, I'm not sure it'll be put on the agenda now, and it had to do with the disposition of any of the old Town Hall and former, you know, the old Town Office Building. There are those two old buildings on Spring Hill. Now, what do we want to do with it? Do we want to eventually spend money to rehabilitate them? Do we want to sell it? You know, what do we want to do with it? They're just sitting there, serving no municipal function. I don't want to get into any of the merits, just a suggestion.
I assume we will have some discussion of that and discussion of the budget.
Well, I don't—it's been discussed in the budget, and usually just how much money you want to set aside for beginning to rehabilitate it.
Okay, we will make—I have a similar—
More general discussion, not a budgetary discussion.
I have a similar interest in this as well, so we will ask to have it on a future agenda. Anybody else have any requests for future agendas?
Just to mention, there was a study done in 2016, we, you know, should we be referring to.
Mr. Freudman, it's almost 10:30. Please stop talking. Everybody knows that we need to look at this, and we will have it on a future agenda. Is there anything else on future agendas?
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, please. Move and second it. All those in favor of adjourning, please raise your hand. Now, informally, we cannot have these meetings going this long. We can't.